I was gonna keep Joey's five bucks that he sent me, but I thought it was the right thing to do to pass it on.
Here you go.
Here, I thought you were just gonna give an extra large contribution.
Anybody want to insert back at Nancy's lab here? I usually give her one. Oh, look, the handle went right up.
Mine wouldn't load on the computer. Am I getting too late today or?
Yeah, I was just gonna say my email and stuff didn't load either.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
Okay. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the January 4th, 2021 Board of Education meeting. And let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Reyes, you wanna plead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with justice for all.
All right, so can we start with the roll call?
Mr. Merrill Gay.
Here.
Mr. Nicholas Mercier.
Here.
Dr. Violet Hymnason.
Here.
Ms. Monica Darkness.
Here.
Mr. Anthony Kane.
Here.
Mr. Joseph Listrow.
Here.
Ms. Annie Parker.
Here.
Ms. Diana Reyes.
Here.
Ms. Gail Sanders Powley.
Here.
Okay. And now we'll have a moment of meditation, and I ask that you keep in your thoughts the family of Stephen Horowitz, who used to be the president of this board, who passed away from cancer this past month. Okay, and do we have anybody who signed up for participation?
There are two phone numbers.
Two phone numbers. Okay, testing my vision here. We have two people on the phone. I don't know if they are people who'd like to participate in public participation. I see eight six oh, and then a number that ends in four seven. If you want to hit star six to unmute yourself and let us know whether you're calling in to do public participation. If you're on the phone, called in, and your last four, last two digits are four seven, and you'd like to speak, please hit star six and let you know that, let us know what you'd like to say.
Nothing, just nothing.
Okay, all right. So I don't see anybody else who is here for public participation. So we will move directly into executive session to discuss some matters related to Chamberlain School construction project.
Motion to go into executive session for a discussion of pending legal matters related to the Chamberlain School construction project with the board. Mr. Kevin Kane, Superintendent Sarah will be joining us remotely, and I believe Mr. Deion may be joining us remotely.
And attorney.
And Attorney Mikhail.
Second.
Aye.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
We are back at 6:41. And now we will do, reading superintendent's report, just accepting it in writing, or are you going to speak from the screen? We can't hear you.
That's because I'm, sorry, I gotta get used to this. Um, I can just do a really quick overview. I did, a couple of board members had asked about why we went through mobile learning. So I did put a rationale. You can see, it was more of a staffing issue than it is anything around the health and safety. Our transmission rate in the building is still very low, but we were down considerable numbers of teaching staff after Thanksgiving and we anticipated Spain following this party. So the two weeks, although not optimal for our families, provides consistency where most of our staff can telework, most of our teachers. And so it's uninterrupted learning for the students with their teacher. So other questions, feel free to ask me. Our vaccination clinic will be starting this coming Friday. It will, it will be on Wednesdays, but because this Wednesday is a holiday, they moved it to Friday. I gave some details for you there. You know, we're hopeful that the teaching staff and the school staff will be, will be here within a few weeks. But we do have, there will be another senior center in New Britain, as well as New Britain High School Auditorium. It will be by appointment only, and so we're getting together our staff list now for the Department of Health, our local one. And then the next is a rationale, and you'll see later on with Kevin's budget presentation, that we're asking for two positions for our Ridges program, which is a, it's a part of our continuum for, for a population of students. And we're modeling it after the success we've found with the Great Transition Center, as our small classroom setting, which is a regular initiative, and the structures, the infrastructure we've put in place to support the learners and the staff in that environment. And so I just wanted to give you a history over the last year, two years, of how NVTC, since we restructured, has been doing, as well as, this is here, tune out our small class setting at Lincoln, and we have a multiple model as well. But just so, later when we do get to the, to the budget presentation that Kevin's been giving, you'll have these notes, and we can speak to those around the need for some supervision and ideas for our staff in the Ridges program in day twelve. And then, and that was basically what I wanted to have for tonight. And that's it. Any questions on it?
Questions, anybody? Okay, we could move on to our next committee reports. Finance, yeah, I think so.
Finance did not meet.
And personnel?
Personnel, um...
Curriculum?
Curriculum met on December 21st, and we accepted our monthly at-advance report. And then we got a presentation by Mr. Lilly and Mr. Duffin from the high school on new courses that they are proposing for New Britain High School. Health and Wellness II, elementary algebra, which receives the credit for Tuncsus Math 095, which is a sort of remedial course that many students have to take when they, when they go to Tuncsus before they can move up to higher math. And a problem-solving course, now that there's more flexibility per the state in the curriculum in math. And then we just discussed purchase orders for a bunch of different, of the online platforms that are being used now, you know, due to all the virtual learning.
Okay, and policy?
Policy had a discussion around some of our committee work and the work of all the subcommittees and how they have been functioning, and just looking to maybe codify or put in policy some of the structures that we've put into place over the last three to four years, just to make sure that they're there going forward. We talked about curriculum and policy and some of the things that we've done. I need to still reach out to the chairs of finance and of personnel to sort of get feedback in drafting sort of policy that talks about what, what are the duties and roles of each committee, what business goes before them. And the hope is that that will serve as somewhat of a guide for cabinet when they're trying to determine what things go to what committees, because I think they've gotten it down, I think there's been a lot of good progress on that. But again, just putting that framework in place for future boards, so that the work that we're doing now is not lost when there's turnover on the boards.
Okay, and did Wellness meet?
Wellness has not met.
All right, and any board reports? Okay, so done, let's move on to the presentations. We'll start with dual language. And who do we have to do the dual language?
Thanks, Mr. A. Kristina and Edward will be introducing, she'll be presenting, as well as, I forgot how to pronounce it. Kristina, I'm gonna turn it over to you right now.
Uh, thank you, everyone. Can everyone hear me? It's my pleasure to introduce Phyllis Harney. Phyllis is the executive director for the Multi-State Association for bilingual Education, which is known as MADE, for the Northeast Territory. Prior to this position, she worked as an equity and diversity specialist at the Educational Alliance at Brown University, and as a bilingual special educator and bilingual teacher in training her mass. Phyllis brings her expertise to New Britain and is working closely with our dual-language team at DuLoreto. Principal Alex Ortiz, as well as Senior Principal Lori Waterfield is also in the meeting this evening. And it's my pleasure to introduce Phyllis.
Sorry, I'm not as comfortable with Google Meet as I am with Zoom, but I will get there. And I have a PowerPoint presentation, so I will share that with you. And I also share this presentation plus other resources in a folder with Christina, and hopefully she will share this, the three resources with you as well, either after the meeting or during the meeting. Okay. Just getting myself ready on my computer. So thank you for inviting me to speak in front of the school board. As Christina mentioned, I'm the executive director for MADE. MADE is a term that we typically use here in our organization. I want to let you know that MADE's vision is that bilingualism and multiculturalism are assets that provide cognitive, social, emotional, educational, and employment advantages for all students. Our mission is to identify, promote, and disseminate research-based programs and practices that support bilingualism and multiculturalism for educational success. MADE offers many services to the schools and districts in the region. We primarily work with schools and districts in Connecticut, Massachusetts, and Rhode Island. There is one dual-language education program in the county. We hold an annual conference for dual-language and bilingual programs each year, where local practitioners and national specialists share their practices. This year, the virtual conferences on March 19th and 20th. We also run network meetings for dual-language educators, coaches, school... Okay, this slide shows some of the resources we use. The guiding principles for dual-language education and the program plan design for implementing new dual-language education programs are resources co-developed by Liz Howard. Liz is a professor of education at UConn that MADE works closely with. MADE also utilizes other resources developed by the Center for Latin Books and by dual-language education in Mexico. We develop the guidance for defining and implementing dual-language education programs for the Massachusetts Department of Elementary Secondary Education. In our experience helping schools and districts, we've also developed timelines, readiness, and decision-making tools, some of which I will share with you in this presentation. So what is a dual- So what is a dual language education program? A program for all students that provides literacy and content instruction through two languages. More specifically, dual language education programs use two languages for literacy and content instruction, provide the same academic content and address the same content standards as general education programs. They cover instruction over an extended period of time, and I will repeat this number of times during this presentation, and instruction in the partner language is at least 50% of its talent. I'm not sure why there's so many highlights in this. Do you see highlights? No, it's just me. The goals of the program or the outcome for students in these programs are grade double academic achievement, bilingualism, and bilinguality, social cultural competence, and MAVE adds closing the achievement gap and eliminating educational disparities for English learners. You will see why we add this goal when I share with you the research of the effectiveness of this program for English learners. Who is this program for? There continues to be a lot of confusion as to who the program is for. I particularly want to make clear that students with disabilities can and do learn in dual language education programs. In general education, we accept all students, and we provide the services daily to succeed. The same should be true for students in dual language education programs. The student population based in a dual language education program determines whether the program is a two-way immersion or a one-way immersion program model. As a general rule of thumb, it took, you, we would consider two-way immersion programs as no less than one-third and no more than two-thirds of the student population, that it should be monolingual or dominant in either English or the partner language at the time of enrollment. Because of changing demographics in many communities, we also have students who are already bilingual, proficient to some degree in both languages. The three buckets represent the three different student populations in a two-way immersion program. One-way immersion program serves a homogenous group of students. Students are either all Spanish speakers, or all bilingual speakers, or all English speakers, serving academics in two languages. This slide summarizes the two program models based on student population. A task early in the planning timeline for the dual language education planning team is to have a clear understanding of the student demographic over time in the community. With deeper analysis of the data, the planning team can then present to the school board their recommendation of whether to open a two-way immersion or one-way immersion program at the Delairedo School, and how their analysis of demographic data supports this decision. How will the balance of Spanish speakers at the school and throughout the district impact implementation and placement in a dual language program? Let me share some examples of demographic data shared with me that begins to answer this question. One of your readers shared that 65% of the student population in New Britain are Hispanic. This data point shows that there may be a high percentage of students who are native or heritage speakers of Spanish or bilingual, and thus warrants consideration of a one-way immersion program for a statistically homogeneous group of students. We will have to go deeper into the data to know the percentage of the Spanish students in the district who speak Spanish or who are bilingual. At another recent planning team meeting, leadership shared that the percentages of English learners at the Delairedo School were decreasing over the past several years. The team should review additional data for wider it has been this decrease in English learners at the school. Based on this early data, we know that there are speakers down in English at the Delairedo School. We will need to understand how many of the English learners speak Spanish or are bilingual, and based on what we learned, a two-way immersion model may be the recommendation for the heterogeneous student population currently at the Delairedo School. The Bilingual Continuum is a tool developed by the Wyndham Public School here in Connecticut, and now used by most districts in the region. It's a tool to be used with parents at the time of enrollment to help the district and school balance placement of the different types of student population. There are other decisions that will be made about the dual language program in the district. In program design, a decision, a decision will be made whether to instruct the students in both English and Spanish beginning at kindergarten or to begin with Spanish in kindergarten and then add English instruction by grade three. The visuals in red and green, the 50/50, and 80/20 design options that most dual language education programs adhere to. Another decision to make is whether to begin literacy instruction in one language and then later introduce literacy in the second language, or introduce literacy, literacy instruction in kindergarten in the two languages simultaneously. Decisions on language allocation or the language of instruction will determine who teaches in Spanish or in English, what languages are needed of the support staff, how much time in the day is taught in English or Spanish, and what subject is taught in English or Spanish for each grade. For example, some programs alternate the teaching of Spanish of teaching science and social studies in the two, in the two languages. Science is taught in one way in English, and social studies is taught in Spanish. But the next grade, the opposite effect, science is taught in Spanish, and social studies is taught in English. This decision makes sure that over the two grades, students are exposed to the content of science and social studies in the program's two languages. These language allocation decisions impact the development of curriculum and purchasing of teaching materials for the program. An inventory of bilingual staff will help determine whether your program will have groups of students taught by one bilingual teacher or by two partner teachers, one who teaches in Spanish and the other who teaches in English. So let's take a look at what research tells us. This graph depicts the research by Thomas and Collier of English learners in the different programs, VSL, OTSO, Transitional Bilingual Education, and Dual Language Education. The solid lines represent English learners. The dotted lines at the 50th percentile represent the average performance of native English speakers on the English reading test at each grade level. In all the program types, English learners appear to do well in terms of gap closure during their early grades. When beginning English learners are followed across time, comparing their achievement as tested in English by the program type, you see differences among student groups are quite small initially in the early grades of schools, K through three. Differences in average student performance become significantly larger in middle school, grade six through eight, depending on the program model experienced through the elementary school years. And differences in average student performance are very large in high school, again depending on the program model experienced through the elementary school years. Only long-term, well-improvised dual language education programs allow English learners to score as high or higher than typical native English speakers after six to eight years when tested on English reading. Only long-term, well-improvised dual language education programs eventually close all the positive gaps. We have research that compares students in dual language programs and to students who are in transitional bilingual programs. And transitional bilingual program is a common program in Connecticut. And this, and the researchers here, they are finding that dual language education is superior to transitional bilingual programs on methods of academic achievement in English and in the native language, and these students outperform their, their other English learners when they're in English-only or transitional bilingual programs. We have research from Thomas Collier, Thomas and Collier in the state of North Carolina. North Carolina is a state with a statewide policy to implement dual language education programs. We have hundreds, hundreds of programs in their state. Their research compares students in dual language education programs to students in English programs, as at K-12, Shelter, English, Immersion, other common programs like other common programs in Connecticut. And these studies are telling us that when there's an English learner in a dual language program compared to not in a dual language program, they score significantly higher on state tests as well as more recency tests, and they match a longer curriculum academically and linguistically than English learners in English-only programs and experience full academic gap closure. We also have research that looks at outcomes of English learners that report to state and federal school accountability measures. On reclassification, for example, English learners obtain English proficiency by grade five to seven. On academic achievement, English learners reach comparatively similar or higher level of content area academic achievement when they're in a program versus not in a program. And on other indicators such as completing high school, taking advanced placement courses, and having positive attitudes for school, these learners are more likely to pass success. The most recent study in 2017 validates over 30 years of research. This is research in Portland, Oregon. Dual language education programs show positive academic gains and language proficiency gains for all students, for English learners, for native speakers of the target language, and for English speakers. I want to point out the last reference on this slide. The research from the previous slide mentioned that English learners obtain English proficiency by grade five to seven. This research is even more specific. The findings say how English learners in dual language programs, for example, English learners who speak Spanish in a Spanish-English dual language program, have a 14-point higher rate of becoming English proficient by grade six. There are many long-term English learners navigating our schools. A dual language education program can eliminate the concept of a, of a long-term English learner. And dual language education programs are an additive program in that they add another language and culture to what students bring with them. Latinx and English learners gain high-quality English while maintaining and professing their first language and affirming their cultural heritage. And for English speakers, they gain a second language and cross-cultural respect and understanding. As Thomas and Collier found, the bilingual, bi-cultural context of a well-improvised dual language program in Ocho Señores benefits for families, including recognizing their resources, families bringing by exchanging skills, by becoming partners in advocating for the program, and through stronger homeschool connections for those who have not often felt welcome in school. Planning for a dual language program takes time, anywhere from one to three years. All stakeholders should be educated about what is a dual language education program. Deeply important is for stakeholders to understand the motivation for implementing the program. Both tasks fall under implementation of a district and school communication plan. Fortunately, there's already an established district school leadership dual language education team. Recently, they realized that their team needs representatives from additional community members, the Spanish and the school board yourselves. The district and school leadership planning team will turn its attention to determine if a necessary foundation is in place to support a dual language education program. A national plan will be developed for decisions at the district level. I just learned that you have a senior equity and parent officer who already has been addressing issues of equity, an example of the necessary foundation in place. Earlier, I mentioned reviewing demographic data. Other data and other needs to review includes achievement data, mobility data, current program evaluation data, staffing needs, professional development needs, and possible revisions to existing policies that may impact the new program. The district school leadership team with a dual language education team along with identified kindergarten and grade one staff who will roll out the program, will participate in a retreat to review the program elements and gain a deeper understanding of the program implementation decisions to make. The outcome of the retreat is an ash and tan of program implementation at the school level. MAVE will continue to provide technical support and professional development throughout the planning process. In the Guiding Principles for Dual Language Education, exemplary practice of program implementation is when there is strong district, district support for the program. This is demonstrated by structural and functional integration of the program into the school system. For example, do the district goals include motivation for implementing a dual language education program? Is the district's assessment system prepared to monitor student growth in the partner language in addition to the state requirement of monitoring growth in English? By long-term planning, examples would be planning full implementation until all the grades that currently exist at the Delairedo School are part of the dual language education program. And by equitable allocation of resources, examples include considering the impact of school choice policy, transportation policy, and by considering initial startup costs that has Spanish curriculum material and for professional development for staff to be on board with the dual language education program. MAVE has been paying close attention to district readiness for implementing new dual language education programs. We have learned how important it, important it is for the school board to share a core belief that of, for all students, including students with disabilities, the following principles apply. Language is a resource. Learning in students' first language affirms their cultural and linguistic identity. High-quality dual language education programs necessit, necessitate constant commitment. And equity and social justice are the guiding force for closing the academic achievement gap. I read a recent article in the Connecticut Mirror that describes how in Connecticut, there are a 35-point achievement gap difference between English learners and non-English learners in reading a math or practicing grades four and five. What's the achievement gap in New Britain? The district readiness tool acknowledges this journey district leadership will engage in for the commitment to dual language education, to sharing a core belief and principle of educational achievement for English learners through equity and social justice, and to eliminating biases inherent in our schools that affect linguistically and culturally diverse students with or without disabilities. Where does the New Britain School Board fall in this journey? I have shared the complete district readiness tool with your readers and hope you will have a chance to review the tool. The tool references other examples of structural and functional integration of the program into the school system, of long-term planning, and of equitable allocation of resources. In addition, you also have a timeline that MAVE has devised to reflect the many decisions that the district and the school will need to make as they can in these programs. And I will end here by asking any questions, comments, anyone in here.
Sorry. I just have a quick question. So you'll have to forgive me, Delairedo, since I can remember, has been a magnet school dual language.
Oh, it hasn't been dual since Kelp got here.
Okay, so that's when it went away. So she's, this group is brought in to reinstitute dual language and really do how we're supposed to do it. Okay, I'm good.
I, I'm sorry. How are they going, like the children that are currently in the school, are they going to automatically be enrolled into the program? Or are all new groups going to be chosen, and how will that happen?
Can you hear that?
Sure. You want me to answer that, or do Alex, would you like to answer that?
It could be you or I, I'll send it.
Okay. So the plan right now, and this is very common, is to create a strand within the school. So let's say you have four kindergarten classrooms. Two of the classrooms would be part of the dual language program, and two would stay with current program that exists in the, in the school. And that's very common, to start as a strand within the school. And what usually happens is over time, eventually, ideally, we would want the whole school to be dual language, but a dual language program, but that, that takes time to get there, especially when you're starting again. So you were starting. So you were starting kindergarten, first grade would be the first two grades that would be to get started with. And because it's kindergarten, you're having new students coming into your school. So this is where I said policies around school choice and transportation and the fact that it's a magnet school have to be addressed because now people are entering, not just because it's a magnet school, but because there's also a dual language strand within this magnet school.
Thank you.
I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions?
Somebody has a hand up, Mark? Or...
Yeah, Mr. Spalding, did you intentionally have your hand up or was that by accident?
I'm sorry, that was by accident.
Okay.
Apologize.
It's right near the mute button, I understand.
Any other questions about development of the dual language program in DeLoreto?
Actually, I have one more, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
Are all the teachers going to have to be certified in their own languages?
So you, your state has a license for valuable teachers. And if you're teaching in Spanish, you're trying to open again a Spanish program because Spanish-English programs affect your student demographics. The teachers who teach in Spanish or academics should have their world language license or show evidence that they are proficient speakers of Spanish. So your licensing, your state would require your teachers to be, have the qualifications to work in this program.
And can I add something? Currently, right now, we have fifteen teachers in the district with a nine-zero-six-two bilingual elementary certification. We also have seventeen teachers who have the zero-zero-nine bilingual pre-K twelve certification. So we're looking at staff across the district as well as staff that are currently teaching at DeLoreto.
Any other questions? Thank you, that was very informative. As a parent of a former DeLoreto dual language kid, you didn't have to persuade me. Okay, so let's move on to our next presentation. The next one is the climb higher students, students and compensation. Any more?
Hi, everyone. Good evening. So as you're aware, climb higher, a transitional program for students eighteen to twenty-two in the district. It really is a gem in our district. It provides an opportunity for high-end students to leave those transitional services from the world of work, the world of work, and into academics. And we are fortunate as a district that have a partnership with CCSU. We're one of a few districts in the entire state of Connecticut that has such a partnership. And it really provides our kids an opportunity to get a foothold into the post-secondary, you know, the post-secondary academic opportunity. Many of those kids work in our community. So they work at places such as Weill, Storybrothers Auto Body, Avery Soda, Marshalls, TJ Maxx, Sabers, Whitson, just to name a few. Because of SSI restrictions, our students are able to only earn up to, students are only actually able to earn up to seven thousand dollars, seven thousand, seven hundred, seven hundred and seventy dollars per year without it affecting their current, you know, SSI benefits. We currently are paying our students three dollars an hour. So these employers we partner with, they're not actually paying them. The district is paying the students. And these kids work really hard, they really do. They're engaged, they're dedicated. And many of our employers actually hire our students once they graduate. But as you can see, we're only paying them three dollars. And if you repay them, I'm proposing, and I'm asking the board to approve an increase from three dollars an hour to six dollars an hour, which would bring the annual pay up from around twenty-one hundred dollars now to forty-three hundred, which is still far below the seventy-seven hundred threshold that these kids are allowed to make. And as you can see, I've provided you a comparison of some of the other programs in other districts around our region who are, what they're paying. So for instance, Project Genesis, which is in Manchester, they're a private program. And we do have these students there. We have students in private programs that I've listed. They're paying them three dollars an hour. Region thirteen, which is Durham, they're affiliated with Middlesex Transitional Academy. They're paying the students four dollars an hour. Farmington Valley School, which includes Farmington and Avon, and they are collaborating with University of Hartford, pay their students a sixty-dollar monthly stipend. Locally closer to home, Futures, which is right over line with Hartford, and we have students there. They're paying nine dollars an hour. And Avery Court, which is a private program, and we have students there, will be paying their students ten dollars. I'm requesting, and I brought this up to the superintendent cabinet, requesting that the board authorize us to increase the pay from three dollars to six dollars an hour for our students. Currently, we have thirty-two students in Klein, and we're averaging right now, across the district, about thirty thousand dollars a year to support those students. So it's going to be an increase about double. Some of that money does come from the IDA grant, but most of it does come from local. So we call your approval to increase that to six dollars from the current period.
Does anyone have any questions?
If you have, also, I have a couple of, I have the teachers from Klein here. If you have any questions to serve to the program or anything, but again, I'm requesting an increase from three dollars to six dollars. We would urge you to, again, these kids, they're very dedicated, they attend school. Even in a pandemic, they've been attending. They have some of the best attendance in the district and they work very, very hard. And the feedback that we receive from our community partners is very positive. And when we're talking about equity, I think it really, it goes to the heart of that. I mean, our kids are coming, any of these kids come from disadvantaged families, and this would really be a help to those families in poverty.
So is any of the additional funds coming from, or we would have to come up with the thirty thousand?
Correct.
That was an either-or question.
It was an either-or. Are they going to give us any additional, right?
Additional, there wouldn't be additional money from the program.
Okay.
The grants, the grants dollars are a hundred for the next year.
All right, so...
Most of it comes from the, most of it comes from local right now. I don't have to be that great now, I can get that for you. But the increase would be coming from local.
Right, the thirty thousand would come from local. So we'll take it from Kevin Salory. No, because I'm all for it, I just need to know where it's coming.
How long has it been since it was last raised?
Probably ever.
So it was two dollars up until seventeen. I don't know, it was from fifteen to seventeen, it was two dollars. And it's been three dollars since the seventeen-eighteen school year. So in seventeen-eighteen, we spent around twenty-seven thousand. Eighteen-nineteen, we spent thirty thousand. Last year was less because it was only seven months. So it was like twenty-six thousand dollars last year. And this year, today, right now, we're about twelve cents.
I'm right behind you. Are you asking for this increase for the remainder of this year? Or is this an increase request for starting next school year?
This would be for next year.
Okay, so starting next fiscal year. So this would be part of our broader budget discussions for the next fiscal and school year. Okay, thank you.
That is correct, yeah.
Any other questions? All right, okay, let's move on to Kevin and the budget presentation.
Can I motion, can we actually move his presentation to where we're actually discussing the budget and the agenda under new business, just so we can get a short, however short it is, break from presentations? Nothing personal, Todd.
All right. So we will move that presentation to the end of new business?
It's actually the beginning of new business. It's really a short break.
Oh, okay, yes, I see.
I was just going to say, what is like a one-minute vote on the consent agenda?
I need a little break.
Okay, so...
Old business.
We have old business.
Motion, motion to approve, the policy committee moves that we approve the revised policy six-one-four-one, which is our curriculum development policy.
Second.
Any discussion?
This, this came before the board last month. I'm not sure if people had a chance to look through it at length, but it is just revising our curriculum process. We actually sort of, with the new curriculum ideas that came forward at the last curriculum meeting, we sort of test drove the policy, as it were. Seems to be very, you know, seems to be nice to actually have some guidelines so that the staff knows the process, so.
Could you highlight, I'm sorry, I don't remember reading it the first time? Like just highlight the difference?
The main difference is this outlines, first off, there was, there were significant differences, changes to the first three paragraphs. We looked through the language, a lot of it was very antiquated and wasn't really in line with the district's mission and vision. So we revised the language in the first few paragraphs to better align with the district's mission and vision. And then the other thing that was lacking was what is the actual process for approving revised curricula and new curricula? So we laid out a actual process where new courses first will come before just the curriculum committee sort of for discussion and tacit approval. And then that would, with the curriculum committee's approval, the, they could be added to the program of studies and the further curriculum, like the full curriculum could be developed. And it would, within a year, they'd have to bring it back to the board for a full approval of the completed curriculum. And it just avoided us having sort of this nebulous process that's, that's existed where we don't really, like, there was a hesitance to bring curriculums forward because to put all that time of effort into it before getting it approved, but at the same time, the board doesn't want to approve something that hasn't been developed. So the entire section for the review process and approval process is new. And it kind of just outlines sort of the practice that we have been sort of using in absence of a policy. If that answers your question?
Okay. Any further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Consent agenda is before you, there are items A through L. Does anybody feel the need to take something off the consent agenda?
Sorry, I was on new business. No, I'm good.
Okay. Without objections, the consent agenda is approved and we move to new business.
Such a good break.
My brain needed it, sorry. Motion to submit the superintendent's budget request for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two to the Board of Finance and Taxation, Mayor's Office, and Common Council.
Second.
All right, so let's hear our presentation about this.
Okay, I'll try to be, I'll try to be quick. If the superintendent wants to interrupt during the presentation, please do so.
So we're using the color version or the...
It's the color version, yeah. So first thing, the presentation, I appreciate it. If I'm not loud enough. I'll try to be louder. You know, one thing with the, with the budget, it's, you know, for members that have been here and new members coming in, really, it's really a two-part process here in New Britain. Most communities, we're a little different, rules are slightly different in most communities. Most communities do bring their budgets forward. Usually the budgets go to a budget-making authority, like, you know, the city of Britain has the Board of Finance, which is the budget-making authority. That's something that's required by state statutes. Most Board of Finances are, is an elected board. Britain's Board of Finance is an appointed board by the mayor, a strong mayor's position. So our process is actually, we follow the city's ordinance or charter that basically says we need to get our budget to the mayor's office by a certain date. It's usually the second Friday in January. But the Friday in January falls before, I think, the ninth or tenth. It becomes the third Friday. So this year, our budget has to be in front of them by the fifteenth, which is later than most years. Once we, before, once your board forwards a budget onto the city, we later on get invited by the Board of Finance, superintendent, board members, myself. It's just question back and forth. And, you know, to be perfectly honest with you, every year when our budget gets forwarded to the Board of Finance, it goes back to the mayor's office as a zero. So we're always, you know, we, nothing's ever been pushed forward to say, you know, give them a million dollars, give them a hundred thousand dollars, give them anything. It's up to the mayor at that time to take the budget and possibly increase our budget or give us something. One thing with any municipality than Board of Education, we're a line item budget. Now, one thing you always hear on the city side, that, you know, we can't tell you how to spend, and you can't. We're more than a line item budget because your board is really the budget-making authority. It's not, it's not, it's a line item budget, it's not one line. On the city side, it shows a one line. So I'm, you know, if, for, if the common council or the mayor decides to increase our budget, they increase the line item. You as a board will decide how to spend that extra dollars. Now, on the city side or town side, when they decide to reduce a budget, the council or somebody at the budget-making authority, Board of Finance, has to basically say, you know, we're eliminating this position, we're eliminating that. That's, that's up to your discretion how things change. Most communities actually goes to referendum, and their referendum usually is somewhere around May first, and it gets voted. Here in New Britain, it doesn't go to referendum, it goes back to the mayor, makes a decision, and usually the common council will approve the budget. When I first got here, it used to be like mid-June or whenever, or early. The last couple of years, it's been a little sooner, which is nice. At that point in time, we're working on the budget one more time. We're looking at our numbers and we're actually changing things. If we get better numbers, that's great for us because we can actually do more. And then sometimes we get worse numbers, you know, and sometimes worse numbers might be in health insurance. We're going to be fine with that. But in some years, you know, we, our health consultant might say it's a two percent increase, and we come to, you know, April, May, they come and say it's twelve percent, which is, which is great because we can budget for that. So we're always redoing our budgets. So we're a two-part process. Tonight, you're going to see a budget in front of you. Superintendent's requested or recommended budget. You as a board need to act tonight or sometime thereafter to forward out a budget to the, to the city. And that's what you have tonight. The budget that you have in your budget book has changed over the holidays. You know, we, there's been some changes. It's going to be incorporated in the presentation, so we're going to go right to the next page. The budget in front of you tonight, on the local side, is one twenty-seven eight-seven, which is a two-point-one-million-dollar increase, or one point seven-three percent. The changes that have been made since you look at your budget book, we've added forty new teaching assistants who provide additional support to kindergarten classes. The cost for these positions is approximately fifty thousand four seventeen. What we're looking to do here is probably hire people who have a degree, paying twenty-five dollars an hour. dollars an hour. Hopefully, some of these people wouldn't actually be teachers in the school system. We're trying to get a, a, a second adult in the classroom for kindergarten. If things go well, that person may actually be supporting both kindergarten and first grade, but we'll see how that goes. So that cost is fifty thousand four seventeen. We're also increasing by new, um, transition supervisor. So the transition center right now is K through twelve. The plan is now to make it K through A and actually set the transition center for the high school level from nine to twelve to the satellite, satellite career count. And that's what you see in there. Those are the changes up there from what you originally have in your budget book. Next slide. This is really just a slide just telling you the history here in New Britain. And if you think about it, we've been flat funded for the last five years. The increase in front of you tonight is one point seven three percent. One of the things I always look at is enrollment. I think if you look back twenty years ago in Connecticut, um, in many educations, enrollment back then, the, the bubble was very high. You know, I grew up in New Britain, later I began finance work in Sinsbury, I moved to Sinsbury. And Sinsbury enrollment back then, when my kids were in school, they finished there in New Britain at the end, was somewhere about five thousand kids. Mine's a fifty two hundred a week. Today, it's probably about four thousand. So the enrollment in the, you know, suburbs has actually decreased quite a bit. And that, that's just ways, it's, it's throughout all Connecticut. The problem in the suburban districts, like New Britain, our enrollment has been pretty flat. As an example, in two thousand fourteen fifteen, our enrollment was ten thousand one oh one. In nineteen twenty, it was ten thousand ninety three. It was a decrease of eight students over that five, six-year period. This year, our enrollment's down. Our enrollment's at nine six twenty eight. Now, there's a very good chance, a good portion of those kids are the kids that are being learning from home, and I mean, the school systems, they may come back. I don't think we lost more than sixty-five students. But the enrollment number this year is, is, is down just based on COVID-19. You know, one thing too, is you can see up in the budget presentation, our per pupil expenditure rank has improved. And, and I think everybody's wondering, how, how did that happen? Really, it's really two-fold. We're very fortunate that they changed the ECS funding for cities like New Britain. So last year was really the first big year we had, we had an increase of three point nine million dollars. Now, let's go back to a situation we had a couple of years ago where, um, our counterpart on the city side actually took the self-insurance fund that was part of education. Part of that process with the city in New Britain is we got something we never, we got something we should've always had, and it's called Special Education Excess Cost Grant. Special Education Excess Cost Grant, you'll find out, is when you send a student out of New Britain with special needs, the state actually will pay back a portion of that cost. Those costs are supposed to flow, be flowing directly to Board of Education, and most municipalities, they do. The city held that back. So when we were going through that situation a few years ago, along with ex, um, self-insurance fund, we actually went back after them based on the state statute, the legality, and by the way, everything that the board did twenty-three years ago, we're getting that. So last year was the first year we got this Special Education Excess Cost. So, so we were a hundred sixty-eight in the, in the state, we're one sixty-six. The excess cost really got us to one sixty-six. The alliance helped, but that's not, we still own the one sixty-eight if we need that. Next slide. Now, this next slide is really enough to do it tonight, but just wanna bring this to everyone's attention. This is last year, the debt service budget for education versus the city. Four point five million dollars was being allocated for Board of Education's debt service, which is, you know, your, your buildings, your Smalley project, um, hopefully someday the Chamberlain project, Gaffney project. The city's debt service is twenty-seven million dollars. Your, our piece or your piece or the student's piece in New Britain is only four point five million dollars. You know, we always talk about, Dr. Sims had a good question, I'm not sure I really addressed it, um, well enough a month ago, where she talked about, and it was, it was a great question about the needs in New Brit, and I mentioned about, we don't have available space. And, and that's true, but you know, one of the things I think as a board and also myself that we need to start putting process in place, not for today, because, you know, we're all gonna be gone in two, four, or five years. It's for the future because we need to basically expand our schools, just like the suburbs did. You think about that. You look at Newington that has, you know, sixteen kids in the kindergarten class and we have twenty, they're twenty percent lower. They have the classrooms. You know, so I always, we always talk about, we don't have the funding to hire teachers. Well, we have no place to put them anyway. We have to basically, it has to be a two-term approach. We have to basically, when we start renovating schools, we gotta expand those schools and have those extra classrooms. Years ago, on the Sinsbury, Dr. Towsley, who was the superintendent of school, he was up there for me, great guy, I had a conversation with him one day, I said, Dr. Shaw, I said, you, you built Henry James with all these extra classrooms? And he says, yeah. He goes, because when this need comes, he says, I'm gonna find a teacher and put in that classroom and drive my enrollment down. We don't have that luxury in New Britain because if you think about it, we built Gaffney, we had eighteen classrooms in Gaffney, when it got renovated, we built eighteen classrooms and then our enrollment was twenty-five kids in Gaffney. We had a problem, we had to take a classroom to make a nineteen teacher by moving one of the special programs maybe to Roosevelt. So we have to start looking, you know, one thing recently, um, our, our state rep, Robert Sanchez, has, you know, really helped us in New Britain going from an almost eighty percent reimbursement of our costs to ninety-five percent. Let's think about that. We, we should be spending more money, so we still get reimbursed for ninety-five percent of our eligible costs, but we, we need to build that ten to twenty percent additional classrooms. I mean, so, you know, the children in this community get the same treatment that children in the other communities get. We're not gonna correct it tomorrow, but we have to start making those plans where we can correct it when those, when those funds are here. What's the worst case scenario? You have empty classrooms. You shut the heat, just like at home, you can't afford the heat, what do you do? You have different zones, you shut the heat off, you close the door, and the light goes on and you can use it for storage. But we have to have more classrooms and that, even when we look at our, our future projects, we need to think about that. So one of the things I said down below, nothing that has to be addressed tonight, we really should need to look at doing a facility needs assessment, which we talked about last year just before, right when COVID-19 hit us. So I'm gonna leave that for, that's a conversation another day, but we need to do just like that. The next two slides is, are slides I provided to you last year. A lot of misinformation gets out in New Britain about, you know, the Board of Education hundred twenty-five million dollar budget and, you know, the city supports fifty-three or fifty-four percent of it. And it's kind of a little false because, yeah, it's true that the Board of Education is a larger percent of the total city budget, but it's fiction that fifty-four percent of the taxpayers' money pays for education. Because remember ECS, and I'll be honest with you, ECS itself, every year, the city receives seventy-two million four fifty seven, that hasn't changed for like the last eight years. That's the number. So when you do a quick and dirty math, you take the one twenty-five seven, less than seventy-two million dollars, the taxpayers are paying fifty-three million dollars. Not today, about fifty-three percent. The next slide. Next slide is just basically giving you an example, last year, I don't have this year's city's number, last year, the two thousand twenty twenty-one budget that was adopted by the city, seventy-two million four fifty-one was excess cost, not excess cost, was the ECS. That's thirty percent was flowing from the state just for education. Next slide, um, yes?
I actually wanna stop there because one thing, looking at the one that was two back, the factor fiction one.
Yes.
I, I think one of the things that you could misread on this, or someone might misread, is where it says that, you know, New Britain's taxpayers support forty-two point three six of the educators' total budget. Some people might look at that fifty-three to forty-two and say that's not a huge difference, but really, those are two different figures. And if you take from the next slide how much the property taxes are, so the total property taxes in New Britain is one thirty-four six ninety-three thousand. And then you divide how much of that property taxes is going to the Board of Education. The more accurate figure is under forty percent.
Yes, yes, you're correct.
It's thirty-nine and a half. Under forty percent of our property taxes go to education.
And you're correct, Mr. Mercy. And that's one thing, there's a lot of misconceptions that are put out there by people, and it's incorrect. You know, one thing when I was in Sinsbury, we had the same thing in Sinsbury. And we used to do the property tax goals for the taxpayers, we used to back out what education was getting from ECS. It may have been small, but they came down early on, the businessman came down and said, hey, Cap, you know, when your tax, when your tax collector does this, you should actually back it itself. And I looked at him and said, you know, you're right, you're correct, David. That is something you get if you escape the fun education. The next slide is really just for this year, or next year, two thousand twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. With the increase that happened in the budget today, we're, we're talking about just under sixty-seven cents of the, of our, of the, uh, the dollars coming from state and federal taxes. This is our combined budget that you're looking at today. Sixty-seven cents is coming from state and federal taxes. The other thirty-one cents is coming from property tax and then another one percent from other revenues and another, you know, less than a percent is coming from the food service fund. Kristen, next slide? Now, tonight's presentation is really just, this slide here is just gonna talk about, you know, the presentation that's going forward. We're gonna talk about the positive funding changes from grants. I'm gonna skip over really quickly the excess costs because many of you have been here before, the same verbage you saw before, per pupil expenditure per person, staffing ratios, students who all certify staff, that's something new we, we found last year on the state website. And then, um, the two thousand twenty-one twenty-two operating budget, net category changes, staffing changes, and just a budget analysis. Next slide, Kristen. You know, one of the things we're finding out is we always, you know, fortunately, we're seeing positive funding from grants. You know, we're seeing for next year and, and these numbers for grants, to be honest, it was things that happened really this year, because we don't really know what's gonna happen next, especially like Title I. So this year, we, the Title I, we, we, but, we, we assumed we were gonna get the same dollar amount we received last year. And the same dollar amount last year was somewhere about six point two million dollars. There have been years here which we assume something and we see the decrease of three hundred thousand dollars, or we see an increase of three hundred thousand dollars. This year, we saw an increase of four hundred fifty-three thousand dollars in Title I. So the best information I have going forward for next year is, let's just assume we're gonna get the same amount. It may be more, it may be less. The asset grant is, if you can remember, is the asset grant is that, um, what do you call it? The, um, it's a Title I grant that has to do with the, the COVID relief for, from the feds. It, it's based on Title I, it's a five point one million dollar, five point two million dollar grant, and it's really supposed to be used for technology and improvements for our students and so forth. Only reason I'm giving you the piece here, because I'm not, you know, this is a, this is a, a grant that has to be expanded over two years, I'm just, here, I'm just giving you a tipper, I'm just picking up positions. So in the asset grant, we do have positions, new positions that your board approved, I believe, was it this summer or was it before this summer? It was a technology assistance, and that's the cost of those individuals. Those are positions, we're hoping to stretch them out for two years. Once the two years comes up, you know, more than likely, they will go away. There's a possibility something will stay if we can afford it, maybe the alliance grant and other things, maybe there's some reason we can, we can keep some of this stuff. But also, it gives Mr. Prokop the opportunity to basically find people, because he does have openings, he does have people at a higher level that may be retiring, maybe moving on, whatever, so this, and these are, you know, qualified technology people, and it gives them a chance to move in our organization. It also gives them the chance to move outside our organization, because that's the whole thing about creating value for themselves. The alliance grant, this is gonna be, it's like a ten-year process, ten to eleven-year process. The increase last year was, or this year was three point nine million dollars. The, the state statute changes, how they do the calculation, we're expecting we're gonna get another three point nine million dollars next year. The legislation would have to get together to basically revoke the, the law and all that. It's probably not gonna happen. One thing here is the commission network. The commission network is a grant that we, we're actually receiving this year. We never budgeting, I never show up commission network, but we're not really sure what we're gonna receive by the commission network. Next year, we're seeing the commission network, it's year two of the commission network grant for Smalley, Slade and Plassey. Commission network grant, we don't exactly know, we know this probably in the last three years, maybe four years. Usually, your second year, we'll be told that it's gonna get reduced probably by twenty-five percent. So that one million six fifty just, is really just the, um, payment we're currently receiving on the commission network grant, I think it's two point two million dollars, is reducing it by twenty-five percent. Third-party billing, that's just something that we, we, we have some, we have some surplus in that fund, we can still use this, so we're increasing that funding by one fifty-four. And other funds are just all the other funds out there, you know, I'm not, you know, there's, you know, it was down fifty thousand, so this is reduction of the funds. And then we're seeing enough six point five million dollars on our grant side and other funds, that's next year's budget. You know, right now, when you look at the budget in front of you tonight, and when I look at the budget, I look at the budget as, you know, New Britain's a little different than most communities, and if you look in the suburbs, you get very little grant dollars, which is, which is good in my position because I don't have to manage, the grants are kind of difficult because they come and they go and you, you kind of go figure out. Most communities, it's a simple budget. They, they have ninety-nine cents of the dollar comes from the, the local budget and there's one cent that comes from someplace else and it's, you know, it's, it's usually a few positions, you know, might be a few pairs or whatever, and that, that's it. So we're always looking around, but right now, next year's budget, seventy-five percent of the increase you're seeing tonight is being supported by additional grant dollars. Kristen, next page? The next two pages really just reflects the excess cost. You know, it's something back in July first, based on your board initiatives, um, the self-insurance fund that the, the city, um, is now allowing its, well, not allowing, this money should always be on, on the board's side anyway, but now it's coming to us. So when the city receives the excess cost based on our students' cost, it used to be booked as a revenue to the city budget. The correct accounting is, once you receive that dollar back, it flows right back to education, that dollar comes back to us and it gets posted as a contra expenditure. So if I, if I'm a budget that I spend two dollars out, I get a dollar back, my expenditure shows up as one dollar. It shows up as a contra expenditure, it sounds like a revenue being posted to an expenditure, it's reducing. So that's something that just happened, last year was the first year, this is the second year. This year, I'm expecting we're gonna have less dollars because, um, with the COVID-19 and all that, we have, we have less students out, Mr. Spog is doing a great job, but then today, you know, it just means we have less revenue, we're also expending a little less money this year too, so it's kind, you know, we don't really know what it's gonna look like this year. The next page is just the verbage, this is just state statute, I didn't write this stuff down. You know, you want, might wanna read it, it just tells you how it's supposed to work, it's very simple. The next page, just giving you an example on excess cost. You know, this year, next year's budget, we're gonna assume we're gonna get a, a revenue of three million dollars. It's the same dollar amount we used in our first year. What you're seeing down below is a five-year history on excess cost. As an example, last year was three point six million dollars, three point seven, two point three, two point four year before, it gives you a five-year ask. It also gives you a meaning for those five years. It also, if you look down below, it gives you a calculation on excess costs is, is calculated, what, what the city receives, what we receive. So for an example, when you look at our per pupil expenditures, well, let's just try to make it simple, our per pupil expenditure right now is thirteen thousand eight seventy. Let's just say it's fourteen thousand dollars, simple math. So anything over four and a half times that cost, which is, let's say, fourteen thousand dollars, we just say fourteen thousand times four and a half times, that comes out to sixty-three thousand dollars. So if we have a student that we spent a hundred thousand dollars on, we're gonna get a grant revenue up to thirty-seven thousand dollars. Now, there's a little caveat here. The state doesn't give us a hundred percent, it's supposed, it's, it's usually somewhere in the seventy percent range, so that's why you see that allocation down below, a reimbursement of seventy percent. It's been, it's been hovering around seventy to seventy-four percent, so I'm using this just to give you an indication, we don't know what the number's gonna be. Because the state only has so much in the kitty, and when all the communities spend the money, they, they send it forward to everybody equally. The next one? Kristen? This is just, I'm not gonna go through it, these are the lineups we use for excess special education. As an example, transportation's one of them. So next year's budget, if you look down way below, you see a nut budget of three million nine ten. That's actually what I'm budgeting, or what we're budgeting for transportation. We expect the expenditure is gonna be four point three million dollars, four million three seven three. We're also planning to get that revenue or contra expenditure to reduce our expenditure. So next year's budget is really the net budget down below. This is just showing you how the budget arrives. What we end up doing, last year was the first year, we actually have all the students, we have a hundred students outside and we, we have all the costs. And once we have all the costs, we allocate it based on the costs of those students. So I, it, it could change, this number here might change next year. Well, the dollar won't change, but the allocation's gonna change. Next slide? Now, this is our per pupil expenditure. As you, as you can see, we're in the Dergau, we're the poorest community in Connecticut. Over the last five years, and to be honest with you, since I've been here, we've always been number seven in Dergau. We're not even close to number six, we're always number seven in the Dergau. So as for most part, you're going to see these communities are always in the same rank order. If you go over the last five years, they're probably still in the same rank order, but we're always number seven. So we're one sixty-six. And if we were receiving the same as our counterparts or the average, we'd be, our, our short cost thirty-one million dollars. Same thing as the state average. So, you know, the state average is, you know, seventeen thousand seven sixty-eight. If we received the state average, we'd be at thirty-nine million, we, we need additional thirty-nine million dollars. Next slide? This slide just really just gives you a, this indication, it's the same slide you saw before, maybe a little prettier. It just shows you over the last five years, you know, one sixty-seven, one sixty-seven, one sixty-eight, one sixty-eight, now a one sixty-six. And the differential between that, three hundred eighty-nine dollars from one year versus the other. A good, a good portion was because excess, uh, special aid that we received over three million dollars. That, that's a good differential. So if we didn't have that, we'd be much higher than Danbury. We would not be one sixty-six. If we get that excess cost last year, we'd still be one sixty-eight, so we'd be closer to one sixty-six. Next slide? This next slide, we're going to give you a twenty-year history on per pupil expenditure. These are our numbers, these are numbers of the state. We can only go back twenty-one years because that's how far back they go, at least on their website. You know, back in nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, true, really, I would say, you know, two thousand three, two thousand four, we were between forty-seven and sixty-eight in the state in rent per pupil expenditure. We were always forty-seven, which means the lower you are, the higher you are in what you're spending. But, you know, back in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, um, at that point in time, you were one sixty-four. We've always been between, well, really, we've been between one sixty-one and one sixty-eight over that ten-year period. You know, one, the next slide, Kristen? These next few slides are things that we found last year. This is on the state's website, which they call the, the sources Ed's site. So you have to find, you have to go on the site and find the link, it took me a little while this year to find the link again. But I found it and, you know, one thing's too, you know, when you look at our enrollment or our certified staff or our, our central office staff, you know, our numbers are lower versus the state average. I think we all know that anyway, because, you know, our per pupil expenditure is lower too, so it, it does make sense. You know, so sometimes you hear that, you know, we have more administrators. You know, there may be a situation, maybe we have more administrators in someplace, I don't know, I'm not really sure where. But not, it, it, it's very unlikely, you know? So these, these next three slides really just show you the numbers that were, were higher, yeah. And I, I agree with you, it's happening right now.
Spent a lot of time on that site.
Yeah, so, yeah, I, I, yeah, I mean, you can go through, I mean, this, this Ed's site thing is really, you can go through any community out there and find out what the ratios are. Yeah, you really can. And but the, the thing is, I probably could do that to the board, but if I find the Dergau, I can see I always compare with the Dergau, which might make sense. You know? And that's something I can probably do, I could find the link again.
Really, really quick question, just on the, uh, per pupil expenditure. I, if, if I'm doing the quick back-of-napkin math correctly, when you calculated our Derg average, that was with our low number included?
Yes, I just did the way they have it, yeah.
Yeah, because if it's, if I'm, if I'm doing the math right, if you count out our thirteen eight seventy-two,
You're right.
Then the average is much closer to the state average, it comes out to seventeen, you know, seventeen thousand five hundred roughly.
Yeah, you're, you're hundred percent right. And that's one thing, when I was doing this, I was like, you know, what do you do, is the, the average without the dollars? But, yeah, you're, you're correct, I, I do the average for the seven communities together.
Right, because before you can do your average per, per pupil, you have to take off which dollar amount?
Oh, um, that's the, what, um, what you're asking about is how the, uh, per pupil expenditure is accounted. And that's like, there's a complicated, it takes off transportation.
Takes off transportation, yeah.
That's right.
And I could actually give you that, so I tried backing that in this year, something a little different happened this year. Uh, I, I, there's, there's another deduction, something we might, you know, I'm close, but I'm a little off. So that's one reason I didn't give you those slides.
Okay.
Yeah, that calculation is weird.
Yeah, I remember it being funky, okay.
But it's apples to apples because every district uses the same formula.
Yeah, so the next, those three slides are really just Ed's, Ed's site because staffing and all that stuff. So, I mean, we can go through it or, you know, I think you've seen it, you saw, last year we went through it. I think it's part of your transmittal letter, and I just want to make sure you have it in your presentation to say you can send the facts out there. Kristen, can you get this slide for, um, general funds, summary per person by category? Okay, so I'm, I'm going to be really quick on that. Today, we made some changes too. You know, today, I officially made changes, I knew there was some changes and so forth. So this, this slide changed by the forty, okay, by the fourteen teaching assistants. And also changed by the, um, one supervisor at the, um, Satellite Career Academy. So everything's the same, the changes were made in salary, in fringe and assurances. Before you had, uh, you had zero increase, now you have one twenty-seven. So that, that's all that changed here. The next slide, estimating grant funds, we're estimating forty-eight million dollars, it's the same thing you saw in your budget, um, in the budget book. There's been no changes here. The next slide, I just want to bring this to your attention. You know, one of the things too, this is, this is something you're all aware of, um, is your district partnership with Ed Advance. This is year two in the development of high-quality prepaid twelve curriculum that was supporting Brooklyn students. You know, the, the cost for Ed Advance is one million seven sixteen five twenty-four. If you recall, this year, the funding for Ed Advance came from the Commission Network grant. Brooklyn High School had a, had a smaller grant on the Commission Network, I think it was year four, which is unusual. There may, there might be some additional funding coming, we don't know for a fact. But this past year, two seventy-five came from Brooklyn High School. The other four ninety-nine, four oh six, five thirty-five came from Smalley, Plasky, and Slade. What I did in this next year for full budget, the numbers can change. I actually reduced their amount, I, I, I budgeted seventy-five percent for their, their current dollars, you know the grant. And one thing with the state, they want to see those reductions, they want, they want you to pick it up somewhere else. It could be a physician, they might say, you're going to reduce the grant, so you better reduce that position by twenty-five percent. And you better place that position someplace else. So right now, we're just going to be quick in your amount. So we, we reduced the Commission Network grant to represent seventy-five percent of the ones we think we'll get. And the Alliance this year, or next year, we're expecting another three point nine million dollars. We, we have funds available, we're going to, we're going to pay for the differential to the Alliance grant. And that's what you're seeing here, just more of a understanding of what the plan is. The next slide, Kristen? You know, I always think of, you know, when we do a budget, you know, because we're heavily grant-oriented, that we really have to look at the whole picture. Because here in New Britain, you're going to see that we may have fourteen hundred plus positions, open-minded positions. You know, thirty percent of our positions are being supported by grants. We're also finding out that because the grant's the only place we're getting additional funding in, um, and many times, where you have less positions, certain positions are actually moving from local to grant. And the reason why, you, you have, you have no, you have no increases in, in the local budget for five years in a row, flat funding. So, and it's been additional costs, I think we all know that. So something has to give, either we cut positions, which is, if we can have the grants, that would have to happen. Or we, we're able to move positions over to grants, which is the Alliance. Now, what, the next page is really staffing changes. You know, one thing too, when we look at staffing changes too, I want everybody to know that, uh, this is more around to the nearest FTE. We do have, you know, some partial positions, so I didn't want to make this like, you know, fifty-seven point zero one positions for administration. That, that's wrong, but there's positions like that, so I have to look at it and just kind of run it to the nearest FTE to make the numbers work. You know, when you look at this, I would look at really combined budget. The combined budget right now in twenty-one, twenty-two, we're requesting fourteen hundred eighty-eight positions, um, versus fourteen eighteen, which is an increase of seventy. Changes that were made recently that you didn't see was forty-one positions, forty teacher assistants, and one supervisor at the Transition Center, um, for the, um, well, at the Career Academy for the Transition Center for, you know, the nineteen twelve program. So this is just giving you an understanding where we, where we stood in twenty-twenty-one, which is the adopted budget you all approved back in June. So in June, we had fourteen hundred eighteen positions, of which those fourteen hundred eighteen positions, a thousand and six were in the local budget, and four hundred and twelve were in the grant budgets. One of the things I, I've seen over the last few years is, you know, we're able to bring some positions into the grants. Some of these are a little paid with it, so I don't want you thinking that, you know, um, usually the, the teachers and certified staffs are, you know, some of those persons are moving from local to grants, and I think we're seeing that all the time too. Because if you look at next year, we're seeing the general fund, when this comes to certified positions, it's a reduction in the eleven. We're adding twenty-four positions, which means those eleven positions are moving over to the grants. And we're able to, you know, add additional twenty-four positions on top of that with grant grants. So this just gives you really a breakdown. The next page, Kristen?
A question?
Yes.
When you say, for example, uh, these positions twenty-twenty-one, you said they're based on our adopted budget? So that doesn't reflect, because I know throughout the year, this year so far, we've added some positions.
Yeah, that's what makes it really confusing, yeah. So what you're going to see, the new positions are really positions that have happened and are.
Plus additional, okay.
I was just going to say, it's definitely plus additional
Yeah.
that I don't even think went through personnel, in all honesty.
And that's why, that's why it makes it very difficult because, you know, um, you know, really, when you, even when you're on a city side, whatever, or, um, or a town side, or, you know, they, they always look at when you do a budget, any other community, you're comparing what you adopted versus what you're requesting, and you, it's no like in-between. And, and that's why it makes it really difficult for me to show you that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Your staffing changes, so the next, you know, I'd say five pages, really, it's just going, five or six pages, it's just going through staffing changes. You're seeing five, um, new admin positions. You know, when I talk about five new ones, we're talking at the lower level. You know, when you look at that admin contract, you, you, you might have a director level, you may have a, which is the highest level probably. Then you have like a principal coordinator level, um, you know, of course, the high school and all that stuff's much higher paid. And then, and the middle school's next, and elementary, but you see the principals on those levels, coordinators levels, they're high. Then you also have, uh, you know, a lower level, which is a supervisor slash assistant coordinator level. These five positions are those positions, you know, they're well-paid positions, but they're actually people that will report to an administrator. So the, the, the plan is to have a transition supervisor at New Britain High School. A transit, uh, New Britain Transition Center supervisor to be at the Satellite Career Academy. Assistant coordinator of ELS and world language, which will report to the coordinator, which will be housed, my understanding, somewhat, we house a little at, at Gates, but also we possibly house at Delarado, uh, with the new programs being implemented back in here. And then through people's services, we already hired or we rehired two BSAs for, um, a Bridges program or, or more of the, um, devolved Bridges program, we're talking about having two supervisors. Now, where are they going to sit right now? That's, so right now, they're just sitting centrally, but for next year, that plan's coming out.
Isn't Bridges, what, Bridges was something else before?
Yeah, I mean, it's something else. Nancy, you want to respond to that?
Yeah, sure. Um, yeah, Bridges, uh, it was called something that didn't, it didn't, it got a name at home. We had a middle school, um, I can't remember what we called it, a middle school, Stoss maybe? I can't recall.
Okay, I just knew it. And it's overarching for every, it's at the elementary school, middle school, and high school, the Bridges program?
That's correct.
Okay.
And, um, in my superintendent report, I kind of gave a little bit of the history. And, and
Yep.
as we, our continuum of services for all kids in New Britain, Bridges is the one program that we're currently, we have a task force that we meet weekly on now. And how are we going to bring it to the same level, um, of quality that we are seeing with our small learning and with New Britain Transition Center? And so that's, and, you know, we create the need for two district supervisors with, or supervisors for these Bridges programs. Um, we, we found, and again, look back to my superintendent report, it talks about, you know, this support provides for teachers on a day-to-day basis, uh, to have someone in the building making those two, um, uh, you know, constant looking at the data, again, looking at this as, you know, and my superintendent report points out that, um, our Bridges program, I'm not seeing the same levels of, of success as small classroom and Britain T C, so.
When we get to questions, I'll do my questions, because I got a whole bunch. I know, I'm sorry, I apologize. When you add, you know, a gazillion positions,
I'm trying to.
It's going to.
Um, next slide?
Bring up some questions.
Now, these are staffing changes on, on certified teachers. I, I can go through them if you want. Um, you know, the big changes here, you know, I would say would be, you know, you look at New Britain High School, we're talking, um, because I think it has to go off the credits and so forth, the expanded credits, a social studies teacher at New Britain High School, a world language teacher, um, at Satellite Career Academy, it's been, it's been different changes. Guidance council at New Britain High School, business teacher at Satellite Career Academy. You'll see a swap-out between a math and science teacher at Satellite Career Academy, it's really the same person. Years ago, a few years back, we hired a math teacher who was due certified. Um, that individual's really doing science, so that's just really swapping out. Um, guidance council at New Britain High School, along with a guidance counselor at the Delta Ed. The Delta Ed is through the grant, it's, it's not a full FTE, but it's like a point seven six, point eight dollars, so that's why you're seeing a one oh. Instructional coach is something that we added an instructional coach this summer, um, that's what that is. You see an equity and climate coach, if you remember, there was a climate coach at Slade that was just, um, recent, kind of changed the job title again, um, you know, I shouldn't say.
But I don't see removal of the deans.
Yes.
I don't see that though.
No, the dean is in here, I'm going to tell you why the dean is in here. We always look at equity in the schools. The thing that came out with the equity and climate coach, or climate coach, I want to call it Slade, was supposed to remove the, the dean.
Yep.
Also, there's a thing that we, you know, looking to do a climate coach at Plasky.
Yep.
The one thing, we always try to make sure the middle schools are treated equal among them. Because if we don't treat them equally, we're going to get that phone call day one, which I've, I've had before, and say, why don't I have a luncheon? And, uh, and so you have to treat both schools the same.
Correct, and we were told the deans would be removed from Slade, he would not be replaced.
And that's something else, that's a whole, the whole thing too with this, with this presentation tonight. Things can change, and that's why, you know, when I talk to the board, even when I talk to, you know, staff and all that, I know people get kind of, you know, internally, people get hooked up and say, geez, you didn't do this, you didn't do that, and they're correct. There's going to be, there's going to be a plan too. So, I mean, tonight, we're just looking for approval from the board, and this budget's going to change again, it always has. And I mean, we, I think we all know that, because with these changes, the board has every right to debate them with, with us, um, with the superintendent, and, and the board has, and those discussions will happen. But when it comes to June, you're going to have a much better budget in June, and I don't mean dollar-wise, but you're going to have a much better understanding that you're either going to buy it or you're not going to buy it. So that's what that is about, it, it's basically saying, well, you need to treat them both the same. And I'm not saying that we can't strip one away.
It was sold to personnel and finance that the deans would not be, the dean at Slade would not be replaced, he would be replaced with the climate coach.
You're, you're, I could just tell myself, you, I knew when they made that change at the end, if we, if, if I didn't incorporate that change, um, I didn't tell the superintendent that, and I apologize, um, but I just knew we'd come back and buy, buy somebody.
Well, I also understood that they were trying this there, so that's kind of a pilot.
Yeah.
So it's part of what they're finding is that they still need a dean to support, like, consequence-type things versus, uh, you know, I mean, that may be part of it.
I, I think one of the things too, yeah, and you're right, I mean, right now, the climate coach is new.
What it's looking like in implementation.
Right, but it was never, it was, that person was going to be able to do all, instead of adding an additional admin-type person to a school.
You're, you're hundred percent correct.
Yeah.
The reason why it's included right now is because if you, if you give the one, you have to give the other. I think with the Slade situation, I think we're going to have a little progress as, if it's a good thing. I think with the Slade situation, I think we're gonna have a little progress, if it's a good thing.
Yeah, oh, I'm sure. But it's, it's gonna be hard to, if Mr. Jones is staying on for twenty, whatever, part-time, it's gonna be hard to tell what, what the downplay is, you know what I mean? What is the actual change? If he's still there, I don't know if he's gone, gone.
He is gone.
Yeah, I believe, I, I.
Can I jump in, Cam?
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so he, okay.
So Mr. Jones is, is actually just started his, uh, work out of New Britain High School with Gino Ayala, out of the Student Assistance Center, as we try to get student assistance centers up and running at both of our middle schools. It, it's, it's all part of the bigger plan around equity and climate, right?
Yep.
Making sure that our, our middle schools, we're taking, we're taking good care of our middleers so that when we get to high school, conflict resolution is a part of who they are. It doesn't, it doesn't happen overnight, and, Gil, you're right. We did say that, you know, once Mr. Jones goes, we're not gonna backfill that dean position. That's true, we're not. So Mr. Jones is now working with Mr. Ayala and both of the middle schools at, and there's training. Dr. Sanders is involved with this as well. There's training for these, these climate coaches, these equity climate coaches, that we, we wanna be sure it's systematic and it's built into the system. Not that it's like doing it one way, Pulaski's doing it another way, but that it all comes, it stems from our work around equity. And Dr. Sanders can, we'll, we'll keep you abreast as we go along. And that's what I have right now. So you're right, Mr. Jones is not there, and we are not filling that dean position.
Right.
Now, as far as, I, I said to Mr. Kane, I need a equity climate coach at Pulaski, too, because we, we have to, we have our resources for all of our middle schools, right? It can't just be someone's idea, and there's not a vision around what that position will do and how it's gonna help us pursue excellence for every New Britain student. But our equity office is brand-new, too. This is, it's, it's taking, it'll take time. But I have full confidence that we're gonna get there. We just have to hire and prepare the right people, make sure that it's well-known throughout the district, what the role is, what the student assistance centers are for. And so Mr. Jones, working with Mr. Ayala now, is to, to, um, help replicate the structure to the middle. Did that answer it?
Sure. Not really, right? Because you're adding the positions, but you're not taking away the deans. So your thought is you're gonna keep both?
Yeah.
Well, the dean, well, the dean is gone. Now, we're talking about Pulaski, you're right, Kevin, we thought we didn't take it off, that's an oversight. But, but at Slade, the dean is, the position is gone.
Okay, so the budget book doesn't match what is here.
You're right, you're right.
Okay, and then I'm good, I'm good.
Yeah, and I, I realized that, I, I made that my own call, just because I knew the equity thing. But I also realized that coming in June, we would have a better understanding, better picture, if it's working.
Okay.
So that way, it's almost like a placeholder.
Yeah, okay.
They don't come back later on and say, oh, jeez, you know, and then, then the board says, you know. So, yeah, I thought it was much safer to leave it in for that reason, though.
Okay.
The other thing, too, is you're gonna see recruitment specialists and an equity climate specialist in talent. I think, if you recall, we already, we already have recruitment specialists in talent. It's a point five. This was something that was not part of last year's budget. Was not adopted in June, it was something that happened in July, I believe, July. That person, we talked about it, one point oh, the person's currently point five. It's in next year's budget, one point oh, it may end up being just a point five, too. The equity climate specialist is somebody to work directly with Dr. Sanders, really report to Dr. Sanders. That's something new. The client will see a future job description on that one.
That's not here.
Yes, it is.
Where am I?
That could be a climate specialist. I'll break into recruitment specialist on page twenty-six. What, Tom? Please tell me.
Oh, I got you. Okay, sure. I'm the, probably, maybe I'm the only one that's like, something's just not set, setting well with me right now, with it. Because, can I just go on a tangent just for a second? Because we just hired, we're, we have nineteen, you know, either admins or higher-up, but we're getting rid of eleven paras or BSAs. Like, that just doesn't sit well with me.
One thing, though, when you look at the, you know, and I'm not, I'm not speaking about the person or whatever. You know, we're, we're currently, in, in the COVID-nineteen, you know, we have a lot of open positions that we have this year. And those are things that, you know, when we come to June, People Services is gonna back, it's like anybody. We're gonna start looking at the organization and finding out if these things are gonna happen or not. Today, you have, in front of you, forty new teaching assistants. Those are the things we're gonna be looking at, and they make a lot of sense.
But it was for kindergarten, where are the eight? These are PPT paras, as it says on here.
Well, that's, well, yep, okay. So, and, and we also have PPT specialists, okay? So I, I can't talk as to what happens, but if you think about it, if you have a certified staff that's running a meeting, he or she should have some type of qualifications to, to take the notes and run the meetings. And I think that's what it comes down to, is you, you have highly qualified people. It's like, you know, you have people that have a secretary, you know, that have a secretary. And what's the secretary doing? He or she may not be doing much, because that person doesn't answer their own calls. It's the same thing, it's the same concept, that if you have highly qualified people, they, they can do certain things.
I was just gonna say, not to jump to too many things, but I, it's also my understanding that teacher assistants will basically have higher qualifications than paras.
Yes.
So they'll be able to do some of those things.
Yeah, you're actually, for teacher assistants, you're actually, your, the goal is to actually find people with college education. I mean, it, you know, it pays a decent thing. Hopefully, some of these people will actually wanna become teachers, so they might end up being certified teachers. You get them in the, you get them in the pipeline, and they end up, might end up being teachers in the school system. It's, it's a perfect thing, you get qualified people.
And, Kevin, thank you. It's hard because I don't see you, because I'm seeing the presentation, so I hope I'm jumping to the appropriate time. Two things, I will have him speak to the, um, the PPT para position, I'll have to beat that in just a minute. But, and I wish, and I wish we, we can produce and send to them, uh, multiple, I would say in the seventies, increases of non-certified staff over, over the last four years. You know, we made ourselves whole from, when the prior administration came and, uh, way off, and we, people. You know, at every level of the organization, it's about training and growing. And to, to Dr. Sanders' point, I mean, hiring teachers assistants who are potential teachers is a, is a great resource for us to, first of all, see how they're working in our schools, and, and then makes it much easier to hire someone, right? You can watch them, and they interview for you for a whole year as you watch them interacting with their kids. We've done the same with, with educators. We've done the same with family school liaisons, BSAs. So we, we have increased. This year, we're heavier, we have a lot of teachers. That speaks to the graduation requirement, right? And, and, and putting it on place. And then the equity climate coaches, again, you know, when we talk about, why, why do we have prime gas lines? We, we've got to build a better, a better environment. Well, that requires support, coaching, coaching of certified staff. That's gonna require people with degrees that can do that for teachers. We know that the teachers are the number one, they build relationships with students. That, and it's changing adult practices, changing, you know, how we've been doing business for years, and seeing that it's now working with many of our students. And I'm gonna step in right now for the PPT para educator.
Hi, although I wanna make clear things worth, we are not eliminating any power positions in the district, okay? We're looking at the time, as superintendent stated, at the organization, some changes in the organization to better support students directly. We have paras on our educators right now that are primarily functioning in a, a, a clinical capacity, and we believe that their services would be more appropriate, working with children where we need them right now. So we're looking at buying, uh, some PPT specialists, for instance, are able to do some of the work that those individuals are doing, and so we're working through that right now. These four PPT specialists, People Services specialists that you see on that, four, four else, two of those individuals are slated to go to the high, uh, the middle schools, one at Slade and one at Pulaski, where we currently have, um, the only buildings in the district, frankly, that currently do not have a PPT person dedicated, uh, specialist dedicated to running PPTs. Rather, we're using school psychologists right now to function in that role, which then takes them away from children, children directly, which we, obviously, we all agree, it needs to occur. So this is something that we've been working towards, as we recall, a couple of years ago. We put, we moved, we made the change, putting PPT specialists in the elementary school, and now we're looking to have that same support in our high school and in our middle schools, which we currently don't have. So that, and, and, and so those individuals will be picking up some of the work that frankly, most districts are doing anyways. And we're, New Britain is sort of, you know, I don't really know where the PPT paras came from, but it's a very unusual position, and I'm not aware of any other district in the state that has, has anyone in that role. So we're looking at reorganizing that. I wanna make it clear that the board, at this time, we are not, and I haven't had a discussion with the president, we are not going to be eliminating any paras in the district next year. That is not on table. We're looking to repurpose some individuals, that's all.
So presentation-wise, you know what I mean? Because down at the bottom, there's, it says, you know, getting rid of one speech assistant, but it says replaced by speech pathologist. Right, I think that's just probably a better presentation for me, maybe? But I just see a lot more, similar to how I felt when we did the facilities, right? We just started the equity, and now we're building in, you know, supervisors and, and everything else, when we really don't know what it looks like yet.
And, Gil, I, I hear what you're saying, but I would argue one person cannot undo.
I'm not saying she can undo it, I'm saying what does it look like? And how do you know you need supervisors and et cetera, et cetera? That's all.
I understand.
Thank you, thank you. Because trust me, I mean, I know we are in a time when we have to change, but how do you know how to change unless you've really started to dig into it? And, and instead of spending money on a supervisor, I'd rather spend money on, you know, maybe you need five FSLs to, to communicate with those kids, and not just a supervisor telling you how to implement equity and climate change.
It's not a supervisor, Gil, that's a specialist.
Specialist, sorry.
No, that's okay. Yeah, no.
It's an admin position.
I hear you. But, you know, Dr. Sanders is only one person, she can run book studies, she can organize books, she needs someone to be boots-on-the-ground, helping with the buildings as well. One person doesn't make a department, especially. This is a huge lift for us, in, in terms of shifting, shifting people's mindsets, and, um, making, we have supports in the buildings in place.
Right, but that's also why we've approved a lot of curriculum to be purchased to teach her, to bring in the equity and the inclusion.
But the curriculum is only as anti-racist or equitable as the person teaching it.
Say that again?
The curriculum is only as equitable or anti-racist as the person teaching it.
Right, I'm not talking about curriculum, I'm talking, the curriculum that we just purchased to teach our, our teachers about equity and inclusion, and looking at it with a, a bigger lens.
We didn't purchase a curriculum for that.
So what did we purchase?
We have, we are, do.
We have vendors coming in to teach it, to our teachers, at Dealaretto, and a few others.
Right, right, so like to coach.
To coach.
Right, but that's not, that's in a few schools, and so this sounds like it would be someone in district kind of doing all that. So we're spending a lot of that money right now on consultants.
Right.
But that doesn't make you, like, I can go to, I can spend all year in an equity training and not be.
And not be able to implement it.
Right.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
Right, like, I, you know.
Right, and you know what it is? For me, typically, when there's a new personnel position, it comes to us, we talk about it. It's not just part of the budget, right? That ninety-nine percent of the time, it comes in as a personnel, we're changing, we're developing a new position, here's how much it's gonna cost, yea or nay? It doesn't just become part of the budget.
I think what's been, when, it's for the current year, like, with our current budget, like, moving around.
Right.
And, and, Gil, I will say, these positions will come to you, but we have to paint a picture of what next year is going to, going to look like, and what we're gonna need for next year to, to begin in earnest, having conversations with staff and changing practices in our district. What does that require? It requires more than Dr. Sanders, right? It requires, and, and now she's working, and she's training herself, well, she's paying training, I should say, and we're partnering with SERC, and we're doing all of those things, but you have to have some staff to help you with the rollout.
Other questions?
Nope.
Now, can I, can I just add one thing, too? But, you know, I was thinking, would we really have, not at this meeting, but future meeting, workshop, whatever, is just kind of a summary, you know, sky-high overview of position changes that we're looking at. You know, the picture, I think, that Nancy was referring to trying to paint is a lot to digest when we're looking at just the numbers and everything else in, in a meeting. But if we can maybe separate that and look at that on its own, you know, because, again, we don't know what cabinet's thinking, because we're not in those meetings. But it would be good for us to understand the justifications.
Right.
Let me just say something, you know, when we look at, you know, years ago, when Mr. Cooper came on board, I think we all recall that there was a reduction in paras. It was quite a reduction. Since those days, and since Nancy came on board to be our superintendent, the numbers have increased. We're probably higher between paras and BSA than we ever have been. So, you know, let's make, let's make a point now, we haven't really gone backwards, we've gone ahead. When you look at, at a new initiative or a new system and so forth, you are, you are taking position, you're looking and saying, what do I need? We know that we, we, we need other positions. So you are seeing a budget, let's be clear, that has a reduction in paras. Nobody's losing their position. Those people don't exist right now, so we have many open positions. So when you look in an organization, you say, what do I need? You know, you know, we're talking about family school liaisons, and, you know, there has to be a need, it has to be given, take. And you're seeing with the teacher assistants at the kindergarten slash first grade, you're seeing there's a need for that. Now, right now, when you look at the PPT paras, or whatever you wanna call them, is really how they're needed. So you can basically take somebody who's in a position, a PPT para is a para. So let's, let's, let's be right to the point. He or she can be, if they are paras, they just do a certain piece that they don't work with students. But they have the expertise to work with students. So we do have people being sent in those positions, who's just being transferred to another position, or they're being, able to apply to another position. They're not losing their jobs, we have openings. So when you look at next year's budget, we're not gonna be sending notices to employee X and say, hey, you lost your job. We're gonna basically say, your, your position right here is no longer here, but we have plenty of para positions that you can apply for or get transferred to. So those positions, that happens all the time. So when you look at, changes do happen, and changes have to happen to move ahead.
I just wanted to think, the one thing that's wrong, we're adding pieces here and there. You don't see the whole picture. So when I look at all of these different positions, I like, I don't know if they fit in, under which department necessarily, or what's the flow chart like? So not just Sam Sanders, and these people are going to be working with SERC, but there's nothing here except for maybe the name clue, if you know what they are. It shows you how this fits together. So I think if we could somehow see like an overall picture, like all of these managers and where are they, who are they working with? Where are they working? Because it just, now it's just names of people and places, and sometimes it doesn't make sense unless you know a little bit more than most people would know in these positions.
So thank you, Annie. At the next personnel meeting, actually, the each department is, uh, At the next personnel meeting, actually, each department is advising their org charts now. They're due to me next Monday. And so, but, and I'll, we'll have the org chart with the, with the job descriptions behind it. So we can have conversations at the next personnel.
Right.
That'd be good, because then we'd know what kinds of questions to ask and what to do.
Because I say, like, the benefit specialist. Hello, where does that come from? Anyway, sorry. Sorry.
I guess I have a question. I don't know, if you go back to page twenty-five, and the PPT supervisor, what's SCA, what is that?
Satellite period.
Satellite period, Kathy.
Okay, okay. Start them from your fingers.
And like, what is a transition supervisor? I don't know what they do. Sorry.
I can kind of sway me talk about that for you, Gail.
Nick has a question, sorry. I'm going to, I'm going to be quiet. I, we can talk about it in personnel. I apologize, I'm going to stop. Done.
I, I just, I just think it's important to also look at the big picture, because I, if you look at the total of what's being requested in new positions, out of the seventy new positions, seven percent of them are admin. Twenty-seven percent.
Seventy new positions.
Out of the seventy new, the seventy changed positions. So if you go to the staffing changes rounded to the nearest.
So forty, right, so the new, sorry, the new, my, that number hasn't clicked in my head yet because it's in the new, tonight's presentation, not what we studied. Gotcha.
So in the seventy, out of those seventy positions, seven percent of them are admin. Twenty-seven percent of them are teachers. Seven percent in non-certified are managerial supervisor. Forty-four percent.
Hold on, go back.
This isn't a conversation.
No, I just, go back.
I'm allowed to just make my statement.
I just wanted to hear what you said.
I just want to make, okay.
I just wanted to hear what you said.
So under non-certified, manager supervisor, there's five new positions, but that's only seven, again, seven percent of that seventy total. Forty-four percent of the new positions that are being proposed for next year's budget are under the category of para, VSA, or TA. So that's where the majority of these positions are, are in that sort of lumped category. And I think it's important to look at them sort of in the bigger buckets. Because these, as Mr. Kane pointed out, a lot of these, the reason they're grouped like this in these non-certified and certified categories is there's movement within those. Right? And there's, it's a talent pool that we, we can use and access. And then there's fourteen percent that are others, and that's like clerical health and the category of other. But I just think it's important to notice that the majority of the new requests that are in this budget have to do directly with teaching students. Over fifty percent, now over sixty percent of the new requests that we have in here are people who are working with students, with teachers. I, I just think that's, that's where we often get criticized, that we aren't putting enough resources into the classroom, but I think, sorry, these staffing changes really are focusing there.
Can I say one thing? I mean, Mr. Mursi, thank you, that, you know, that didn't put it up myself. The only thing we always talk about in Britain is, I know, Superintendent, I always talk about the pipeline. Pipeline where, you know, we hire somebody, and then he or she can better themselves by moving to a, a better position. We do have a countless number of paras that do have degrees or are working degrees. And some, some ought to be teachers. But at the same time, you know, they, they actually not have an opportunity to go from a para position to a TA position. It pays a little more, it, it's probably a little higher quality. Not to say they can't do it, but it gives them the opportunity to basically prove themselves even more and make more money for their families. So I mean, it, it's, it's a great, so if you really think about it, it's a combination of both. They're not paras, but they're teaching assistants, which is, we can, we think it's a higher position. It's a great way to move up in the organization. They create value for themselves. They create value for themselves in the school district, as a para, as a TA, whatever. They can create values in the school district, figure us enough to become a teacher. They create value for themselves, where maybe they can move out of the school district and become a teacher in another school district. And it gives them the opportunity to get that, those credentials and make their resume much better.
Will, will some of those teacher assistants also have the opportunity to work within the preschool? Or are they strictly going to be kindergarten, first grade?
So I think the rationale behind the kindergarten teachers for this coming year in particular is that we're going to have a lot of kids who are coming into kindergarten who don't have a preschool experience, or had a really weird preschool experience. And we're just going to have a lot of kids adjusted to school in a different way. And this is a place where, you know, we gave up paras in the, in the kindergarten years ago so that we can get to full, all-day kindergarten. That was a hard.
What did, what did you give up, sorry?
We gave up paras in the kindergartens so that we could have every child getting full-day kindergarten. And so we, you know, we know that we've got kids who come into this school district well behind in language and social emotional skills and executive function when they're starting kindergarten. So having more resources at the lowest grade levels really helps to try and catch them up. That's the rationale behind doing that.
Merrill, can I add to that?
Yep.
Preschool also has, correct me if I'm wrong, but preschool also has a, it's required by statute, but they're, they have to have one adult for every six children, I believe.
Ten.
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 Oh, ten, okay, one for every ten. Kindergarten, there's no requirement.
No, not that. You're talking to a licensing inspector there, so. She's a daycare licensing inspector.
Yeah, daycare is one to six, one to six.
No, one to ten.
It's one to ten.
One to, the ratio is lower in the birth to three.
Oh, that's right, okay.
And a family-child care.
Okay, right, but kindergarten, there's no, there's no limit. So by comparison, you're looking like, you know, for example, where I teach in Cheshire, our kindergarten class size is typically fifteen, sixteen, with, with, right, with two adults, the teacher and the TA or IA, whatever it's called.
Right.
My daughter was one of twenty-seven in K with no IA, you know, in Britain, so that's.
They're supposed to be.
Right, and, right, right.
Davis, bro, yeah?
Just to sort of build on that, it's almost like, if you think of it, the reason I think it makes sense that they're lumped into the same category as the VSA's and the paras is by putting this intervention, these teacher assistants in kindergarten, it's an intervention. And hopefully, with those students, we might need fewer paras later on. Right? Because there's definitely. Or BSAs. Exactly. I, I think it's an investment in the early education, and I think that pays, that'll pay off dividends down the road, both, you know, educationally and fiscally.
Okay, are there other questions about the budget? One more? There more pages of the presentation?
There are, I'll try and put them.
Or you could, we could just carry on. Just vote.
Just go right to the last one, what we asking for?
You can vote. You, the staffing changes on manager supervisors, you already approved them. So this should not be any surprise to you. The next page, clerical staffing changes, you're pretty much aware of all those too. Those already been approved. Everything's aboard active, other than the benefit specialist. That is a new position. So when you look at the clerical on page twenty-eight, everything's already been through you, other than that position right there. If you look at twenty-nine, we already kind of went over that. We're hashed out on the para, VSA, and TA. The health medical, that's really additional nurse. That's really a student need. You always find out, either we decrease by one, we increase by two, or decrease by. Every year, Jackie Maddie, if there's a student needs that comes into this school system, sometimes we have to have an additional nurse, LPN, that's what that's good. That's what you see here. It may, it may go away. Other changes was two-point-oh, three-point family school liaisons, which are, which are already approved and already in there. And the speech assistant, which is a position we eliminate this year, during this year for new speech pathologists. Yes?
I know what a benefit specialist is, because we have one in where I teach, but could you explain for?
Well, a benefit specialist, you know, in the HR.
I know what a benefit, a benefit specialist is.
It's a health, it's a person that works.
I do.
I'm not saying you don't.
Yeah, works with the employees and the health insurance and all that. Our HR department had a benefit specialist slash legal relations, which is on the current manager, and that's at that position. So it's really, you know, you think about benefit specialist, you want to make sure you have somebody that's a full-time job, to actually, you know, works well with, with the employees. And actually, the position can also help out in, you know, yes.
So is that a, is it a new position? Or are you changing the manager's position?
No, it's a new position.
Okay. So it's in addition to what the manager does today? Somebody that, to assist her?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Your next several pages are just really the budget analysis. And you've probably seen that in your cover page. It's, it was part of your, I believe I included most of the stuff in here. The only change you really see here is when you go to certified salaries, I added the administrator, additional administrator in there. So that, those numbers changed from like two-point-six million to two-point-seven million dollars. When you go to the non-certified staff, the forty teaching, teacher assistants were added in. It used to be six-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars, now it's one-million-nine-seventy-seven. That's just showing the, the changes. So everything's the same, other than the fully position. And the same thing with the health insurance. We added health costs to those employees, of course, that goes up. And also retirement contribution, that goes up too, because they're all going to be on the MERS pension plan. So MERS pension plan has an eighteen-point-three-nine percent contribution by us. So if you pay so many thirty-two thousand dollars, we, we contribute about six thousand dollars towards the pension. All the others are the same changes you saw in your transmit letter. Any questions, you know, who's been asking today? You know, hopefully, you can always reach out and make arrangements. And the last page, we're not going to end today, page thirty-five, it, it's up to your board, you know, motion of the forward-sufficientated budget, and that's what it is, one-twenty-seven, eight-seven, two-seventy-eight. So that's the requested budget.
Okay. So we have a seconded motion.
Yeah. Yeah, at the beginning.
Second.
I was going to say it was already seconded.
It's already been seconded.
You've got to vote.
So we have a seconded motion, sorry, we're muffled, we're asking.
I know.
Conversation there. Is there further discussion on this?
I just want to add that this is modest, and from what I've seen in districts and schools and whatever, you know, we should be adding twenty-five interventionist positions for math and twenty-five interventionist positions for language at all the grade levels, and having, you know, real interventionist teams that meet six, you know, every six weeks and put in plans in place and what, and we don't have that. And those are the things that, then when people argue about our standing academically, not that I agree with necessarily what the, what the measures to define what our success is, are, currently are, but when you look at those, and they're a certain way, it's like this chicken or the egg. Like, well, show us you can achieve, and then maybe we'll give you money, you know? And it's like, well, we don't have the tools that other places have to make this happen when a child is behind, you know, in whatever measure we, we are using. So that's my little comment, thank you.
So what's your pleasure? Do we, have we had enough budget fund? Do we want to put this to a vote now and do it? Or do we want to continue this for, you know, postpone this to a special meeting? If that's, we could just simply adopt it now and send it on?
It has to be.
I was going to say.
Has to be there by the fifteenth. Yeah, it has to be there by the fifteenth, so.
Yeah. Basically, if people wanted to discuss it further at a special meeting, then the motion would be, you'd make a motion to postpone it to a special meeting. I'm happy with the motion as it sits on the table, you know, as it is right now.
Okay. So, any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. All in favor of submitting this proposed budget to the Board of Finance?
Board of Finance and Taxation, Mayor's Office, and Common Council.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Come on, okay. All right, motion carries. And let's move on to the next item. Since that was the first of many.
Make a motion to approve a purchase order and bid waiver for a delivery van for CSDNB Food Service Department in fifty-eight thousand, six forty-five.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
You know, I'm kind of done with questions. I just worry about spending money that is for COVID, like COVID times, or is this?
No, we, this.
Going to go forward.
We have a couple leases on, on vehicles that are coming up. This is coming with a food service fund, which we know we have excess funds.
Well, we could maybe use some of that to make some better food.
It has to be spent on food service, so.
Yeah, it has to be spent on food.
Well, what I was going to say is maybe better what we are providing our students today. Maybe we could use some of that money for that.
Well, you're going to see that. One of, one of the things coming up to you tonight, too, on the food service, as to the hiring of consultants. I know Hannah Fano has spoken to the board about it. She's very qualified, and that's, that's, and that's coming from that fund too. And that's something to look at. I wish, I hope it's Texas, and we probably get on, but there's no more order. It's all coming from food service. And, you know, there's ample funds out there to do.
Okay. Sure.
Just as a general statement, I think part of the frustration people are expressing currently is people talking over other people, not letting people finish their thoughts. So I think it's very important that if, like, it helps if you let, if the people are allowed to finish their statements, really, it's not, in, in a board meeting, it's not, we're not supposed to have conversations between people. Questions should be directed through the chair. And part of the reason for that is to avoid cross chatter that tends to lead to, you know, people talking over each other, or out of turn, or things like that. And Ms. Conley can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe that what she was trying to say is she has reservations about spending fifty-eight thousand dollars on a new truck, where that money could perhaps be better spent on current food quality. And I think that was the point she was trying to make. I think it was just a point she was making and not necessarily a directed question.
Correct.
So I just think tempers are up a little bit, and that might help, is if we.
Tempers may not be up as much as your spidey senses and spending money on things that could be used for other things, because we have all this money sitting around. That is all.
Okay, so is there any?
I do have an actual question as far as why, if, if we potentially have time, why we're not going out to bid on this versus doing a bid waiver?
Hannah Fano is on that, you know, I know she, I just texted her, so.
I'll, I'll repeat it if Ms. Fano did not hear.
Yes, she is on that.
My, my question is as to why we're looking to do this as a bid waiver rather than going out to bid on the, on this item. And it's a similar question I have for the next one as well.
Yep.
The delivery van and the delivery trucks.
The delivery trucks have specific requirements and specifications, and the vendor is on the state contract. So maybe the state already went out to bid, and they are a food vendor. So that work has been done for us already.
Yeah, what about the van? What about the van?
The van also is extremely specific, because it's for food delivery, it has to be refrigerated. It's not something that we would be easily able to just go out to bid, and I don't think it would be readily available. So it's very specific.
I would request, and this kind of goes to all departments, that in the future, if something is on the state approved list, that that information makes it into the memo. Because that is one of the exceptions, is that we are allowed to substitute things on the state contract list for bids. in which case it doesn't necessarily need a bid waiver, it'd still need a purchase order approval. But if we see on the board memo that it is something that we are getting from the state contract list, then that just answers a question for the board before we even get, get to the item. So it, just going forward in the future, all departments, please.
Fine, good. Any further questions or discussion on item B, the purchase order and bid waiver for the van? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One opposed? Okay, and then let's move to item C.
Make a motion to approve purchase order and bid waiver for delivery trucks for CSDNB Food Service Department.
Second.
Discussion?
Are these replacing, are these replacing delivery trucks that are like out of, or they addition?
No, they are, basically, the current trucks are now obsolete, they're actually leased. So the lease is up and the trucks are no, no longer useful. So yes, we would be disposing of those trucks and these were now the ours.
Thank you.
So any further questions or discussion on item C? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Let's move to the next.
Make a motion to approve a purchase order and bid waiver for school nutrition and food service consultation provided by Noto Nutrition Consulting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we got a second motion. Any questions about this?
I can just mention that Stephanie Noto is a consultant. She met with us when we discussed starting the Wellness Committee backup. And she'll be providing support for people in the Wellness Committee, Witsins and members of the community to revamp school food.
So we are not our own food service provider. I'm curious why we need to bring in a nutrition specialist. Wouldn't they have a nutrition specialist within Witsins?
Currently, Witsins has, the vendor, they actually have a program and they're developing menus. With the nutritionist, what we're going to do is with her experience and her personal background, she will be developing menus so that specific for our needs in our district. And Witsins were actually going to hire a nutritionist last year. Which we would take from the Food Service account anyway. But I prefer to go out and have someone that we selected so that we can direct the menus in our coaches. And in addition to the menus and the, and the program itself, which is part of the Wellness Committee and overall, you know, and, and the other initiatives that we have in the department. So again, she'll also be serving our Wellness Committee as well.
If I, if I understand you correctly, and, and this gets into, like, the, I, I personally feel like the Food Services Fund and the Cafeteria Fund sometimes is a source of confusion and it, it's weird how it works. But if Witsins was going, are you saying if Witsins was going to go and hire a nutritionist anyway to do this type of work for Witsins for us, that they, they could then hire whoever they want and it'd be billed to us anyway?
Correct, that's correct.
So if they were gonna hire a nutritionist, they would hire a nutritionist for every district that they do business with or one, or like one or two nutritionists?
Well, here's, one of the concerns was that they could technically hire a nutritionist. We would pay for it and then they would use, you know, their services for other districts. So that's not something that I want to, you know, I was trying to avoid that. And also having a nutritionist, you know, on, on our side or our team, we could use her to help us assist with managing the Food Service account and making sure that we follow all the federal guidelines. So basically, she's more than, than, you know, developing menus. She's developing us just move forward with the account and the possible, possible destruction of the warehouse with transportation. So it could be a lot of staff and workers to stay to do that remain on for us.
Further questions, discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, one opposed? All right, next.
Sorry, I lost my little document. Sorry.
I didn't use.
There we go. It's E?
Yep.
Approve purchase order and bid waiver for disinfectant wipes in the amount of 125,970. Any second?
Second.
Didn't we just do?
We talked about it in the Finance Committee.
Okay, it was in the committee, okay, sorry. I thought we did it on the last meeting.
Yeah, because before they were making their own meetings.
Yep, 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 I'm mixing, mixing meetings, okay.
Another load of disinfectant wipes.
Yeah.
That's just a one year supply.
That's a one month supply.
Okay, so any discussion about another load of disinfectant wipes?
No.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I understand that Superintendent wanted to poll item F. Is that correct?
Motion to postpone indefinitely item 7F.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of indefinite tabling?
Aye.
Aye.
Item G, approve purchase order bid waiver and contract by and between Navigate 360 LLC and New Britain Public Schools for Navigate 360 Safety Suite in the amount of 126,036 cents.
Second.
I. Yeah.
Yes.
I know, don't be afraid, I'm sorry.
I'm used to you, I'm, it's all good.
Apologize.
From Little League baseball, not from here. So this is basically Alice, Navigate bought Alice, so Navigate is now the company for this. This 126,000 is a three-year contract. And we are able to save a few tens of thousands of dollars doing a three-year contract. It would start in July, we're getting it now to save even more money on it. And the reason being we want to start it in July is because we're in the remote and hybrid models now, so it's not really worth it to deploy this into the schools with just a few months left. You would get quite a few things with this package. One, trainings for all new and returning staff, self-guided trainings for Alice. And that's something we've struggled with here. We had recorded videos of us presenting and they weren't getting the whole thing. As I've been evaluating all the safety stuff since taking this position, I've been talking with the Department of Homeland Security and they've kind of noted to me that the templates we were using for our safety planes in the schools weren't in full compliance. Tom Halleck was working on fixing that before I came back. And so I've been working with the regional manager here. And but Alice, the Navigate 360 suite, presents all of the compliance plans for us into the software. So all the principal needs to do, or the school emergency team, goes into the software, plugs in their information and then it uploads to the cloud and then we send to the state. So all this extra work that we were doing on our end, filling in all these handmade templates, would be gone. Further, one of the things I like most about this is God forbid if we have a school emergency and the students and the teachers have to go to a rally point and parents have to come pick their children up from this rally point. Teachers, staff and everyone else with the software can interact in real time. So if a student gets picked up by the parent, they put it into the system, from their phone, their tablet or their Chromebook.
That's kind of cool.
And it distributes to all the other staff. So Johnny's over here and Peter's all the way over there and Johnny's parent comes here, but Peter's their brother or something, let's say. The staff member says Johnny's been picked up and everyone gets that information all at the same time. And then, and if there's an emergency in the school, central office admin team can log into the cloud, see what's going on in real time, interact with the school emergency response team in real time. The school emergency response team itself can interact in real time regardless of where they are in the building. And then all the teachers and other staff can interact with each other in real time as well. And it's all, again, cloud-based tablet, phone browser. So you don't have to worry about phones or calling phones, I should say. And any of that, it takes all of that away from there. Besides that, you have pretty much other stuff in there as well, but those are the main features that I wanted to highlight from that that I think will just make everything more cohesive across a district and more standardized rather than each school kind of mashing together their own template.
I want to say this is something that they're in the process of slowly rolling out in Windsor and I thought, I think it's a really good system if we implement it. And that's one thing that I, knowing that Matt's behind this, that I, I believe it'll get implemented. But realistically, this especially even for things like fire drills and other safety drills, being able for teachers, et cetera, to just instantly respond from either their phone or any other device they have, a school, a classroom tablet or Chromebook, when they're in the building, outside the building, it just is, it's relatively easy to use and it just makes that recording so much easier because I, so many times, just the, just this basic fire drill and the amount of chaos and confusion and just, it doesn't have to be that complicated. So I, I, I think this is a, in terms of the size of our district, I think this is a good investment for our safety.
And then the point too would be during these three years, to evaluate what we can maybe do in-house after that. So can we create systems, you know, with MIS to replicate what's in the system so we're not paying 128,000 every three years? And that's really the kind of goal here, to evaluate this.
Yeah?
So I heard you say there are safety plans they can do themselves now?
They have been doing them themselves, but we've been putting together templates.
Yep.
Right? And not fully compliant with the regulations from the Department of Homeland Security. The Alice software, Navigate 360 software, pulls it straight from the Department of Homeland Security, puts it into the cloud for the admins at the schools to create and upload. And then automatically, basically, you're in full compliance right after it's done, as long as everything's done. Here, we have to do it, I have to put them together, send them off to the Department of Homeland Security. They have to approve the template, some school misses this, some school misses that, we have to bring it back. And it's just a longer process, this will make everything more efficient and standardized, I should say, as well. And emergency, first responders will have access to this as well. So when they're coming to the schools, they'll be able to log into the system. We'll have, give them their information to log in and they'll be able to access all the information right away too.
The past Alice training that we used, I thought when we purchased it, it was for use ongoing. Without pulling up the contract from three years ago, I think we did the Alice training? When we purchased all of the software and everything and all the training videos? Like, did those just, that was just money thrown away?
I can't speak to it unfortunately, yeah.
Yeah.
Wasn't that training versus?
Training and material, like I thought we purchased all of it.
I want to say that might have been just the training stuff and it was good for a certain amount of licenses.
Yeah.
This package is a broader thing and it has unlimited licenses.
Okay.
Yes, Matt, you're correct, it was for license, this stuff is on his call as well and he was involved with that as well. It was for site, it was for licenses per person?
Okay.
In addition to the training.
Yes, that's correct. And we made a video of the major presentation that we shared through the safety portal.
Thank you. Thank you, I wasn't sure, like, I thought we, like, we were doubling up on something that we already bought.
Yeah, I think those licenses have been used.
Okay, yep.
Okay, any further questions on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next one.
Oh, Lord. Approve purchase order and bid waiver for flooring, furniture and technology updates for the facilities department in the amount of 101,520, $528.18.
Second.
Okay.
I'm giving you an answer, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Smedley in there.
Just be better, give him some Xanax.
We'll say two of these larger items, we have this, the flooring, we bid out, so we have three bids. We have a notice, shall we need for what I do with flooring? And when it comes to furniture, furniture is under state contract that the DAF did out, state contract. So that is where we're going out to bid. I will say Gate Building is renovated in 2002. Gate Building, also 272 Main Street, it's with, or that has administrative offices, 49,000 square feet. One person that you're interested in has carpet, which is an air quality issue. It is something that was 20 years, no one had updated that building, and it's starting to update. So Mr. Smedley, if you'd like to present and what we're trying to accomplish, why was that accomplished?
Yeah, thank you very much. I'm gonna present my PowerPoint presentation. Can somebody in the room just let me know when you can see it on the screen?
Yep, can see it.
Okay, great. So the Gate Building, as Mr. Deon mentioned, was renovated in 2002 and has collected some furniture and materials since, since then. And let me just, I gotta get started, switch slides, sorry. There we go, okay. So Mr. Deon instructed me to look at a modernization and a remodel of our office space. And I took a clean, minimalistic approach to creating a flexible workspace that we could all work in.
Mr. Smedley?
It's a service organization that consists of our custodians, maintenance, security and support staff who work in our office here, dedicated to the success of our district, faculty, staff and students. Our current office space on the fourth floor of 272 Main Street was last renovated in 2002, as we said. When we moved from Liberty Square to this facility, the space we occupy consisted of forty large lateral file cabinets, which had files from before I was actually born, we found a file cabinet dated 1984. And there's three cubicle workstations that you can see in the picture on the screen there.
Mr. Smedley, could you actually, could you actually present the PowerPoint? Because we're staring at, we're staring, staring at MS PowerPoint, yeah, actually presented.
Wait one second, hold on, I'm sorry.
Not a problem.
I'm gonna stop the print workstation for one second. Sorry about that.
Not a problem.
Let me, I want to talk about.
There we go, thank you.
Yeah.
So our office there, as you can see, has three cubicle spaces on the left and a file cabinet down the center. And there was some original furniture over on the back right from what used to be called the Hill, the original Board of Ed building in the, in the city. Around the corner, we have a space for our custodial managers, which is partially shared with some of the academic department. And you can see it's just cumbersome, the environment appears messy and it appears dysfunctional. The Skywalk, which will be included in this project, is the bridge that connects the city hall to the Board of Ed building. And it's the main entry for all staff every day and the way they exit to their vehicles at the end of the day. Currently, the space, as you can see in the picture, has worn carpet from the constant foot traffic, some dated wallpaper and there's still some cosmetic damage from water damage that occurred a couple years ago and I'm seeing hypers in that space. Our workspace, which is where myself, Ellen Salala and Randy Brochus sit, has weathered and stained carpets. While they're cleaned every day, the carpet has very much passed its life expectancy and where. While they are cleaned every day, the carpet has very much passed its life expectancy and wear and tear is very visible. There's peeling of the carpet, there's tears, and you can see the discoloration in that picture. Again, my vision was minimalistic, functional, flexible, and clean. We are the hub for all things clean, logistic-wise, and problem-solving. So we wanted to create a space that would be inspirational, clean, flexible, so we could adapt to the daily needs of, of us who want us. So, if you take a look at some of the diagrams I have on the left, or the diagram I have on the left of the screen there, it's a 3D rendering. And you'll see a better version of it in just a second, but I want to talk about the amount of work that our department does do. And the graph that's on the screen is the work order totals. In July, there was a total of seventy-six work orders submitted, seventy-three were closed out. August, forty-one submitted, thirty-three were closed out. September, we might be the school open, one hundred and thirty-two were submitted and one hundred and twenty-three were closed out. In October, seventy-nine submitted, sixty-two were closed out. And November, forty-two submitted and thirty-two closed out. And the point of this is to explain that it takes a team to accomplish that much work to close out that many work orders on a monthly basis. And we need the space and the ability to work every team to do just that. The big clean occurred, I immediately moved thirty-one of those file cabinets down to a storage area that we have available. And if you have walked through our space recently, you will see the major difference. We can actually read up here now. Our painter came in and removed the cold base and applied some new paint to our walls, we went to a modern gray color. And any antiquated technology or dated items, furniture, we either put in a free sub-corner outside the elevator or we recycle it appropriately. The design process, as I said, involves a couple 3D design concepts and you'll see two on the screen here. We're looking to include four workstations in the main area, three for the staff who currently exist, plus an additional fourth for one of the management folks, custodial managers, security managers, who might stop into the office, or John Leong, our maintenance supervisor, if they needed a desk space. In the center of the room is the flexible table that's movable and will allow for us to have department meetings there or presentations. And at the top of the screen, of the, like a three-station set, some desks against the wall there. Those will be like our technology control area for our building automation and security system. The picturing screen now on the left is an example of the vinyl flooring that we're going to be replacing the carpet with, or that we would like to replace the carpet with. A lighter tone gray is what we're looking at going with. And on the right is an example of some of the furniture that is included in our package. Just more furniture pictures showing the different colors and depth configurations that will be available. This is the actual 3D rendering that, or excuse me, the line drawing rendering that we settled on. So you can see, sorry, at the bottom left of your screen, there's four workstations in a L shape. Those would be Randy Groshu, Helen Salali, myself, and the additional workspace that we talked about. At the center of the room is our flexible table. Off to the right is a seating area that can also be used as a meeting area. And then at the top, where you see the handicap symbol, in the middle there, those are three workstations for our security, HVAC, and building automation systems. Here's an actual 3D rendering of what the space would look like. The colors are not, not solid yet, we're not going to have the green, that's just what they put there to differentiate the furniture for us. But here's an idea of what it would look like. And you can see there are dividers between each workspace that extend out from the window wall. And we intend on creating a separate space off, separate from the elevator with that wall in front of the seating area, as you see at the bottom of the screen as well. I created this idea of workspace with synergy so that we could be flexible enough to diagnose what problems we have for the day or that we have on the table project-wise and that we can mitigate those issues and move forward. The furniture is all completely ADA accessible, the desks are what are called toggle desks. They raise and lower, so if an employee wanted to stand and work, they could do so, or if they wanted to remain seated. And as you can see, it's all clean lines, sleek-looking, modern furniture. The budget for our project has three different parts to it, the walls, the floor, the lighting, the furniture, and the technology. As mentioned, we've already completed ninety percent, we've completed painting the walls in-house with our own painter. The flooring, we're looking at a durable vinyl plank that will extend from that skywalk straight through the entire office space. Our print room and a conference room. The wall system is from, from a company, BCI Contractors, who is on the state list as well. And that includes the desks, chairs, the workspace tables, and any storage cabinets that are included in the project. The technology aspect is the monitoring system that we talked about. This will be the control system and the AD system that runs, combining those three or four computers for those systems onto displays that we have here in facilities already. And then lighting, we actually own the lighting fixtures already, it's just going to be our in-house electricians or contractor for labor to install the new lighting fixtures, and of course, they are LED panels. This was my original timeline, and then Christmas happened and we had to get on this agenda for tonight. So I do plan on taking an aggressive approach to completion of this project if it is approved tonight. But that has been our timeline since the start of November. I was also asking this project by Mr. Kane and Mr. Dion to include what a future cubicle workspace would look like if other departments wanted to model their workspace after ours. And I'm aware that each department has established practices and built a culture on their floor. And I think the old-style cubicles can be replaced with this new workspace system that I'm proposing for facilities. And the rough cost of the layout you see on the screen now would be about sixty-seven hundred dollars per cubicle. Now, you can get two people in there for a little bit less because you're essentially just extending a desk space to be a secondary counter. But there's flexibility in that sense, and they can be moved down the road much more easier than the current cubicle setups we have. At this point, in order to demo the desk that we set at now, we actually have to have a contractor here to take it apart, remove the electricity, et cetera, et cetera. So that would be eliminated with the new workspace system. Mr. Dion explained that we did fit out the flooring replacement, we actually have four quotes for that. The lowest responsible bidder for the project was Valley Flooring. The furniture and the walls are from BCI, they are on the state-approved list, electrical lighting. I'm estimating at about four thousand dollars, also I'm done for labor to do that, but that can be done in-house. And the technology is the other approval that we're looking for tonight for the AD control system. This screen shows you the three contracts that we're looking for approval for. Valley Flooring for twenty-three, nine eighty-three, BCI for fifty-five, one oh seven, which includes the furniture, the wall dividing system, labor and install of all furniture, and then of course, as I mentioned, CMI Sound's quote for the AD system. Are there any questions?
So if I'm understanding the presentation, then the only thing that wasn't either on state lists or put out to bid that would be over that threshold, that seventy-five hundred threshold, is the CMI sound systems. Is there a reason that that wasn't bid, or was it?
You are correct, I'm, I'm sorry, is this, is this Mr. Mercer, I'm sorry?
Yes, sorry.
Yes, you are correct, and to be honest with you, I received that quote over the break. It, I didn't get the quote in time, and this was the only quote that I had. I'm looking to install proprietary, it's called Atlon, video management system here. And CMI Sound is the only local vendor that provides that brand of equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Questions? Nope, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Dale, okay?
Sorry for me.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay. And, run to the next one.
Approved budget transfers in the amount of three hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars. And I believe some of it is for the, I was going to say Alice training, but that's not it, the Navigate 360, right? The facilities improvements? Oh, yep, sorry, 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 I was, I was going through each.
Yeah, I apologize, I didn't bring my memo with me tonight. These are, the transfers are probably, I think it's the description next to it for the three forty-six, what the pieces are. You know, we've talked before about, you know, we do know our, our medical self-insurance fund, I think we just went some discussion, does, you know, have a surplus on it. We're not taking it from that fund, of course, but the recommendation, we do have funds.
To underfund it, right? We're not underfunded, but.
Line item to the needed area, so that's what you're seeing here.
Yep.
I'm just, I'm just keeping count of it.
All right, so, any further questions or discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Dale opposed, all right.
See, I can't vote yes for something I voted no for, I can't put the money there if I didn't vote for it, right?
The next one, personnel, now we have, yeah, we have done budget transfer, now we need to fiscal report J.
Yep, sorry. I don't know how to quickly get back home.
Motion to accept the financial report for November twenty-twenty.
Second.
Okay, we have a second motion, one more.
Oh. Just say yes.
So this is just our standard.
I was going to say, this is a standard report, I believe.
This is monthly.
All right.
Right, this isn't the year-end, this is your monthly.
If you had a finance committee, you would have.
Yeah. It would have been on a consent.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sorry.
Any questions about this? Nope, seeing no questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, so the next one is the superintendent's year-end evaluation. Mr. Mercer put together a...
So the evaluation was a summation of sort of the notes from our meeting, I sent it out to board members. I didn't get any feedback for things to change. Technically, the next step in the process, though, is we're supposed to meet with the superintendent and have an executive session to discuss before we vote on anything final. And I'm not sure how the board is feeling about doing that at the moment, but that would be the next step in the process, is to meet an executive session with the superintendent to review.
So would you think a special, sorry? Would you think a special meeting or a next, like February, is that too? Because I'm, I'm just going to say, I'm going to assume, like you can't really talk about L until you talk about K, yeah.
I, I would, I would like to make a motion to postpone items K and L and ask for the, the chair of the board to call a special meeting sometime in the next two weeks so that we can handle those items on their own in a special meeting. They'd be the only two business items, and then that way, it's minimal staff sitting around waiting.
Yeah, no, okay, so, yeah.
So I'd make a motion to postpone items K and L to a future special meeting to be called by Mr. Gig within the next two weeks.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.